Okay.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting September 21st. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:31 PM. First item on the agenda is public comment. If there's any, any of the attendees that would like to speak, just please raise your hand. Can we bring Mr. Miller over? Oh, he put his hand down. Mr. Miller, are you interested in speaking now? You are. Okay, we bring you over, please. Good evening, Mr. Miller, welcome.
Hi there, planning, sorry, I got confused, you know, I'm still on last night's time, I think. It's not the planning board, it's Tuesday, it must be Board of Selectmen. Good evening, Board of Selectmen, and thank you so much for allowing me the floor. It was a very long night last night on planning and just about everybody was there. And so I know tonight looks like a long one as well, so I'm gonna be brief. Regarding the map for the proposed downtown district, I just want to say something, you know, in part for the benefit of folks following along with this from home, since of course the majority of you were present at the hearing last night, and I'm sure Mr. Healy has brought himself up to speed. Last night, the planning board was unanimous in endorsing the second of four mock-up maps prepared by Ms. Hecker as the map that should define the downtown district. That cleaned up map would leave the seven split lot parcels plus the one acre sliver of land owned by the CSX Corporation inside the existing business village district. The new downtown district would thus have its southern terminus east of the railroad tracks at the Falcone Energy Property, that's of course the gas station on Boston Road, instead of in the middle of the yard at the residence next door at 35 Boston Road, while west of the tracks it would end where all common sense would have it end, at the paved terminus of Park Street, not through the middle of the swimming pool on the property at 2 Foley Drive. So, you know, I, I think there's a compelling argument to be made, in fact, from a legal and a public policy standpoint for downzoning the split lot parcels. But that's not the proposal I brought forward. Instead, what I proposed entirely in the spirit of compromise and what the planning board has now endorsed would preserve all of the rights that the split lot owners and the CSX Corporation for that matter currently enjoy, all of them. At the same time, it would provide protection to the entire Lattice Quama Road neighborhood and to my good neighbors on Foley Drive, Peggy Drive, Birchwood Drive, and McNeil Drive, a lot of voters, all of whom would have serious concerns were a downtown district map that included the split lot parcels to go forward. You know, why this is so critical is something I won't go into right now out of respect for your time. You know, the EDC has struggled with the idea somewhat inexplicably to me, but the planning board has not. And last night, Ms. Luttrell of the planning board, Ms. Houlihan, among other members, were wonderfully clear and direct in explaining why this matters and why leaving the split lot owners with all the rights they currently enjoy, but adding no others is the solution to a problem that we have all agonized over for yearly and nearly a year now and which would be fair and just to everyone. I, you know, I want to say about this very personally, that I care about my property very deeply, but I also care very deeply about the property of my neighbors and my neighbors, including the split lot owners equally. So, you know, to conclude this at last, and it's been a long road for us all, you have a unanimous opinion from the planning board. You have the solution in front of you. You have the chance to square away at least this one issue regarding the downtown district tonight. And so I very, very, very humbly and respectfully urge you to do exactly that. And I thank you once again for your indulgence and your time.
Great, thank you much, Mr. Miller, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else under public comment? Going once, going twice, and I see no one. All right, our first scheduled appointment, I don't see. Nitu Sengal, I don't see they're there, so we'll, we'll keep a watch out. We'll move past that, I guess, at this point, and we'll go right to the financial quarterly review. So can we bring Carla over as well, please? So while we wait for Carla, I will just say kudos to you all. This, this was a pretty substantial package that you gave us and the amount of time and effort that you all put into this, including Ms. Malinowski. Congratulations on this. This was pretty incredible and I myself only ended up with two questions out of the whole packet and got them answered. So that being said, hi Carla, welcome. Do you want to start and then we'll go, you know, you or Brian, however you want to do it?
Um, you want to start with revenues or expenses?
What do we do, revenues? It's on your sheet.
Okay, that's Brian.
Ryan, we're gonna start with you.
That's me, okay, I'm up. Well, good evening, and yeah, I, I'll just echo what Lisa said about a good process and Ms. Malinowski was very good to, to contact myself and Carla and get a lot of questions answered. It just helps clarify some of the small things that we come across during these quarterly reports. So you can sometimes get lost in all those details that you got on your sheets there. So this is June 30th, obviously, it's the big one, it's the end of the year report. I'm not, I won't go line by line, that's silly. You can obviously see the results in front of you, but I will just make a few quick comments. Overall, it was a good year, I think we can all agree, considering the crazy, crazy year we went through and to still be up, you know, over $200,000 over last year is, I think, a good, a good ending. I don't think we could ask for much better. So there's just a couple of big winners and losers here. And I tried to explain them on the sheet, so for instance, excise tax, motel tax, some of the R and B fines, obviously, the building fees went the other way, or were a very good positive. Our investment income, which is, again, self-explanatory, no need to tell you if you have a checking account, what you're earning on it. So there's, there's those handful of things that really spun things around and faithfully, in the building fees and the, in the tax liens, we had a handful of large events happen, whether there were cases that settled or whether they were building permits that got pulled that were bigger ones this year. So that really, really helped us, you know, get that $200,000 surplus over last year. So again, it was a good year, the water fund, again, self-explanatory. The rates did rise and I feel like we can analyze another, you know, if we do need another rate increase next year, based especially on what the capital comes up with for Springtown meeting, we'll take another look at that. But right now, that looks good too. So I don't have a lot of bad news, except to say that we're setting these rates or these estimates for the new year, probably in the next 30 days, within the next 30 days. I'm sure we're still gonna be a little conservative and probably keep them very close to where they are now. I do think we should tweak some of the categories a little bit here and there, but I can't, I don't think there's a case made to lower or higher than, you know, significantly either way. So, you know, we'll see, we'll see how these go. But I'm, I'm pretty happy about it, you know, I had a lot of trepidation through the year and I think we all did. And, you know, things could have been a lot worse, so I'll leave it at that, I'll leave that on a good note.
Great, Brian, thank you. So Chelsea, I don't know, as a liaison, do you want to add anything to what Brian said?
Nope, not on the revenue side. I think he captured everything in the, in the memo and I, I just think we need to keep in mind, especially the building permit for next year when we, when they sit down to do their projections and we just have to remember that that was probably a one-time hit up.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Healy, any questions, comments on the revenue side?
Uh, no, I'm good again. I, I thought that the presentation on, on paper was very easy to digest and captured what happened in the last fiscal year. It's an interesting mantra, things could have been worse. Well, I mean, I actually think that, 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 given the circumstances, that it was a particularly good year in no, doing no small part to your efforts, so thanks for that.
Mr. Stivers.
I'll echo Marty's comments. I'm actually delighted that we came out as we did. I had a lot more concerns early on about a lot of uncertainties relative to COVID and so forth. But again, it's great to be in this position and I think the summaries are very helpful. I appreciate that. I don't have any specific questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Mr. Dennington.
I also found the report pretty positive. I have a question and I don't know when, if it goes to the revenue or expenses, but the, the two-page summary didn't seem to address CARES reimbursements and I don't know how that, how that's treated from an accounting standpoint, how that fits into the, the report, because it seemed like a pretty good report. And then if, in addition to that, some of the town's expenses we can anticipate are gonna be reimbursed by CARES money, then the pictures, I guess, would be even better than being presented here?
Um, can I?
Yes.
The FEMA and CARES reimbursements there, well, the expenses that will be reimbursed, Andrew, are charged off to special revenue funds. So they don't even hit the general fund budget. It's a separate special revenue fund. DOR requires us to set them up that way. So I've already taken everything CARES and FEMA like and moved them out. So these are, these are clean numbers. A good question.
Was that it, Andrew?
Yes.
All right, Carla, well, I guess we'll just continue with you and, and move to the expense side.
Okay, um, I would like to echo Brian's comments. You know, I think overall it was a good year, you know, on the memo, I, I kind of tried to just highlight some, some points. On the reserve fund, we only needed five transfers from the reserve fund totaling, you know, $30,000-ish. We, you know, DPW was tracking for a reserve fund transfer, but they had salary savings and a light snow and ice year. And so we were able to cover recycling and extra trash charges, which was, which was a nice surprise at the end of the year. Usually the surprises are the other way. I want to give credit where credit is due. Library and Council on Aging both had reduced hours, operating hours, and they did return those funds to the town. And Council on Aging had a, a good savings and, you know, programming. Unfortunately, they weren't be able, they weren't able to run a lot of their programs, so they turned that money back to us as well. So that's on the general fund side. The, a new thing that we added is the revolving fund, actually. So we put a chart in there showing the 10 revolving funds that are voted as in the revolving article at town meeting and just an explanation of why they're there, what department is responsible, and just a snapshot of what they, how they did this year. So that was something new added to the, to the quarterly report, which will continue in future quarters.
Great, thank you. Chelsea, do you want to add anything to Carla?
Yes, um, first of all, I'd like to thank Carla and her team on the diligence that they did throughout the year, working with the department heads. And I think the department heads were very receptive to the new financial policy. So if you remember, last year before we installed the financial policy, I think we had 30 line items in the operating budgets that were $5,000 off from budget to actual in the negative. And this year, when I went through the detail, I don't think that there was one line item that we didn't, that we hadn't been made aware of throughout the year. So kudos to all the department heads for following the process and making this year-end process cleaner and, you know, have, being able to anticipate where the problems were gonna be. Obviously, we understand that there's, you know, going to be some variance, variables with budget to actual, but I appreciated all their efforts. So I think hopefully this year will be an easier lift for them. They kind of know what to, what to expect through, through the process. So thanks to them. There, there is one outstanding question that I had by looking at EDC's consulting budget and that led to some questions around some of the expenses that I saw that were part of the EEA grant. So I'm still waiting to hear from Marika on some of the details of that, so that I can understand those expenses. So I'd like to just add that as an agenda item for the next meeting, Lisa, so that we can follow up on that.
Great, Chelsea, thank you. Mr. Healy.
Yeah, I'm good on the report, again. These quarterly reports are very much accomplishing what I think all of us hoped they would at the outset, which is giving us quarterly snapshots of, of where things are. And I guess the one thing, and it's not really, is if, I guess this is to, to Brian and Carla, if there, I mean, there's the raw data of the, the quarterly reports. If they, if you are seeing red flags, obviously, you're noticing them. What's the, what is the best way for you to flag that on the reports? Because it's a lot of numbers and, you know, doing quick comparisons from, you know, one year to the next and the like is, is, is helpful. But you all are, you know, the boots on the ground and are gonna have a much better feel on a quarterly basis and an annual basis for where the red flags are. And what's the easiest way for you to communicate that? I guess that's my only question.
You want to take it or you want me?
Well, I can give you my take on it. What I do is, when I look at the reports on a monthly basis, is I kind of go off the percentages, you know, like if we have, you know, $100 in the line and it's only four months through the year and it's 80% spent, is it because we, you know, paid some licenses upfront or whatever? So when I go off the reports, I, I look at the percentages on the, for the straight-hand column in the data. And I think, and maybe, you know, I don't know if I'm self-explanatory, but I, you know, in the meetings I have with Chelsea as a liaison, we bring that up and we try to put what's most important and what is the most likely to be an issue in the quarterly report memo. Are you asking how to put it in, how to flag it in the backup, do you mean?
No, 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 no. If that's the, i- i- if, in other words, what, i- i- if your, you know, sort of operating procedure is to, is items that you flag that are, are going to, if they're material, you know, we are dealing with accounting, if they're material, you're gonna flag them in the, in, in the summary, that's fine with me. I wasn't entirely clear that that's what you're doing, but that, if that's what you're doing, I'm completely comfortable with that.
Yes, and the new policy for department heads, if the lines are over 5,000 or they expected to be, we ask them to, you know, write a memo to you guys and just everybody be on alert. So the department heads have really done a good job with looking at the budget and a different, you know, this new light, you know, they've, they've done a good job.
So, okay, and, and I'll just apologize for my finger, again, I'm way off-site again tonight and the logistics of handling my, my iPad are a little funky, so I apologize for that. But again, nothing more.
All right, Mr. Stivers.
Thanks. Again, I find the, the summary report very helpful and it sounds like this is working well. For me, one of the key metrics is Chelsea's comment that far more of the line items are now on track during the year than has been the case previously. So I think that gives me a lot of comfort that if some unusual circumstance was developing, that we are in a lot better position to find out about it early and be able to do something about it before the fact, as opposed to getting surprised after the fact. And so I think that's a, a great position to be in. And again, thanks for the effort to put this stuff together, very helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Dennington.
I have a process, a question. So for the first quarter of the fiscal year that we're in, will we have a quarterly update like this? So I guess that would be coming up where September would be the end of the first. So when, when would the next quarterly report be? Right about, right after September 30th or, because I know we're discussing really the wrap-up with the last fiscal year now.
Right, right. We always talk about the first quarter being the one that's kind of the, the, you know, flimsiest, because there's just not a lot there. But it'll probably be right about the very early, we're at the end of September, very early November.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, thank you. And the, the one thing I did wanted to also thank you for that I found was very informative, was on the DPW piece, what the extra costs for recycling and additional trash were. I know we kind of paid really close attention to that as we've gone through the year, trying to see, you know, with, with the extra costs associated, especially with the recycling, where we would end up. So I, I found that very informative to have in there, so I thank you for that. So I have nothing further. I have no further questions again. Thank you both and then Ms. Malinowski for, actually, Mr. Purple, I will go to you. Is there anything you would like to add to this?
No, I'm just, like I said, I'm very pleased with the way this has come together. I know that the board was looking to, you know, to get these quarterly updates and, and try to get a, try to get a format that, you know, gave the board what they wanted and gave the snapshot and then gave you as much detail as you wanted. I really think that Carla and Brian have done a great job and, and I know that Chelsea has guided them through the, through this, you know, to, to get it to where it is, but it's really a, a finely tuned machine and, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's a good team, so appreciate the effort.
Thank you.
Have something.
Oh, go ahead, sorry, go ahead, Carla.
I'm sorry, I have two more quick things. One thing I just wanted to bring up was looking ahead to FY22. When Chelsea and I were talking, we were discussing the value of moving like computer repair and equipment, like the actual items that need to be replaced by IT, consolidating them and putting them into the IT budget. If that's something that the board is, feels there'd be value in and support for, we're gonna be talking with the departments, you know, as we meet with them and try to call out where their software equipment lies. We, we think we know where it is, but we're gonna have discussions with them. The total is about 247,000 was the budget for this year. And if we take out the, the actual IT stuff that lives in IT, it's about $62,000. So, um, you know, there, there could be a value to having that all in, all in one and getting it on Jay's replacement schedule and, you know, having it in one place. So I just wanted to bring that up to the board. And also, we have not forgotten about FEMA CARES and ARPA. We're actually awaiting the guidance. There is no new guidance out yet. So, and I'm actually at a conference now and we were talking about it and, you know, we haven't gotten it yet, but the minute we do, we'll send it out and, you know, we'll go from there. So I just wanted to mention those two things. Thanks.
Okay, Chelsea, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, so I think every, every time I go through these quarter, quarterly reports and I see office repair, office equipment repair in several department budgets, I do think it makes sense for it to be consolidated to IT. That way, we make sure that Jay's aware of everything that's kind of out there in the departments and making sure that, you know, we're going through the right procurement and replacement for any equipment. So that, that is the direction that I'd like to see us go in on that one.
Okay, so I think the easiest way to do this is, if anybody disagrees with that, please unmute and, and speak instead of going around the table. So I think you have your answer, Chelsea. I think everybody's good.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I'm all done, yeah, I'm all set.
Great, so again, thank you very much for everything, much appreciated. Enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you. You too, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the review of the draft, Draft Lighting Bylaw Rules and Regulations. Can we bring over the telephone number? That's Ms. Houlihan. Thank you. So basically, what the, the preference is, is to, from the planning board is to highlight the vital area, which is kind of in the enforcement piece, and get some feedback on us. The rest of it's pretty technical. So as we've gone through this, that was actually, it was really, wasn't easy reading for me until I got to the enforcement piece. So I know we've kind of brought this up a little bit, but we haven't actually kind of found a path on how we think the enforcement piece should be done. I know we had talked about at one point whether it actually falls with the building inspector or with, it's actually with someone with more expertise and with the equipment, whether it's the electrical inspector, that might be better to, if there's any enforcement issues of going out and doing light readings and whatnot, they would have the equipment to do that. So I think that's what Marnie's looking for. Marnie, please jump in if, if I'm going off the beaten path.
Yeah, thanks, Lisa, so you can all hear me. Sorry, I'm on telephone.
Okay, so are you, you pretty much are looking for the enforcement piece more so than?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I think what we wanted to do is, I think a lot of the dialogue that we had along the way was around the enforcement. In our original draft, had the property owner had the burden of proof. And so when you read through this, what it really says is, what, what we first tried to do is separate non-residential from residential. And non-residential is really just what it's always been. It's through our planning board process and the building inspector is, or building commissioner is the person that would enforce the non-residential. And on residential, we have really just kind of made it simple to say that property owners are encouraged to resolve their own lighting disputes. But if, if a resolution is not viable, there is a complaint form currently through the building department. So we had suggested that they utilize that complaint form and that they basically fill that complaint form out and just provide two forms of kind of verification. So that the pictures taken from the property line show the fixtures to light trespass and there's a measured read and taking from a lighting app, which is really something that you can download on any telephone or a mobile device. And you can put that reading to see if it's over a property line. And so that is really what we're suggesting is the way that it could be enforced with, through the building department. And then we basically say the building department would follow up based on their availability, contacting both homeowners regarding the concern and they could issue a letter regarding the complaint. And additionally, a site visit could be, could be scheduled for a visual observation. But we've really tried to simplify it and I, what our, our purpose here is, obviously, the lighting bylaw has been passed and we want to make sure that there's a, a path forward, which we, again, do not believe that this will be, people will be clamoring down the building inspector's doors. But I'm, I'm certain a few handful will, will come up in the next couple of years. So it's just a matter of having a process in place and getting your feedback on, does this help hit the mark?
Great, thank you, Marnie. We'll, we'll go down the line, but I think for me, this addresses a lot of the concerns I had other than when it's those one or two that the building inspector. I guess that would depend on what the issue is and it could be addressed as we go down the line, if need be. But I think the language here is good, so we'll go to Mr. Stivers first.
Sure, thanks. Marnie, I think this is a good solution. I 100% believe it should be the building inspector who follows up on this. One tiny point in that residential enforcement paragraph, there are two typos. You call it, you call for a compliant form instead of a complaint form. But from a process standpoint, I think that it's, again, appropriate to go there. And my guess is that there will be very few complaints from this. And I think this helps clarify a lot of uncertainty around the whole lighting issue and people, I think, can plan accordingly with this level of detail. So I think this is a good step forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stivers. Mr. Dennington.
Sam picked up on the typo that I was gonna mention, so that's already taken care of.
There are two of them, actually, but two of them in there.
Compliant complaint or?
There, there are two compliance.
Yes, yeah, okay.
They're out of compliance, but it says complaint. So I, maybe I'm missing where this is. Sure. They're out of compliance, but it says complaint. So I, maybe I'm missing where this is.
It, it talks about a compliant form instead of a complaint form twice in that paragraph, residence thing.
The one I have is both complaint and the only thing it says is, is out of compliance. So maybe we're not looking at the same version, version that six point one, eight, four, twenty-one.
Yeah, the one in the packet. I don't know which one that is.
Yep, that's the one in the packet.
Yeah.
Uh third sentence down, third line down, building department compliant form.
Yeah, that's what we have, Marty. It was in our packet. It's just
Oh, complaint. Oh, compliant. I thought you said compliant there.
Compliance, the two sent, two lines.
Thank you.
Just minor detail. One other quick thing, Marnie. Enforcement is spelled wrong as well at the top.
Yep, missing any.
So I think it's, I, I think it's good that the, you know, the main piece of this, the residential component. Um I think it could be even a little stronger that the, the building inspector shouldn't take any action on a complaint form until, you know, th- there's been some uh, you know, the person making the complaint has attested that they have made an effort to try to address it with their neighbor. I think it says that, but it could be just even slightly stronger. Um I have a question about um uh Lisa, at one of our pre- meetings a couple of months ago, I think we talked about could um like a notice card explaining these new rules to everyone and their water bills? And do you know if that happened? And if so, ha- was there any feedback at all? Um.
Andrew, you just said that to me or to Marty?
I guess to both of you or who, whoever or Mark or whoever would know um if it happened.
I'm not aware. Mark's not aware. Marty, do you know if anything went out?
So I have not received anything from Jim, Jim Hegarty that the, the state has actually approved the bylaw officially. Is that, has that happened?
It hasn't yet, Marty.
I think, okay. So I don't think we can put anything out until that happens.
Okay, that makes, and, and Marnie, the context of it was just that at a meeting, after town meeting that the Board of Selectmen talked about how, you know, there was a relatively small number of people attended the town meeting and a much larger number of people that are going to be subject to it. And there could be some benefit of just informing people of these new requirements. And we thought that including a notice with the water bill would be a way to do that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Malinowski.
Thank you. Um and thanks, Marty, for putting this together. Um I do have one question, but I think it might be for Mr. Purple. Um and in terms of the enforcement, I know it references the building department. Um but Mark, would, would the commissioner have um another resource outside of her role that would be more of a lighting person to evaluate these cases? Or is it going to be um actually the building commissioner that would look at this? And, and has she seen um this draft?
So I can't answer the, I can't answer your second question, but for the first question, you know, the building commissioner is going to be responsible, I believe. Um in some of the conversations I've had with her, that she probably would lean a little bit on the electrical inspector, um who I think is, is probably a very good resource in this area. Um but again, I think it's important for her just to kind of get a sense of, of, and, and get a look at the, and get a look at the draft. I'm not sure that she's had that opportunity yet.
Okay, okay. Um and I'll just make one comment. I, I do like how, I do like the approach in um especially the residential piece. And that was one of my concerns is that we try to do some mitigation um before we would have to um actually have a complaint filed. So um thank you, Marty.
Marty, can you answer? Do you know if the building uh commissioner has seen the draft of this?
Um I actually do not have um confirmation of that or not. I know she was aware that we had um updated it and we were presenting it and sharing it to you. So I just don't know if she's had a chance to read it.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Mr. Healy.
Thanks, Lisa. Hi, Marnie. How are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Um tone and substance, um I agree with uh the comments that have been made. Um I think they're spot on. Um I apologize. I'm just, my schedule last month, I haven't had a chance to, to dive into this as deeply as I might. But I, I guess I'll um before I even think about doing that, one of the nice things about the new structure of our um legal counsel um arrangement is that thi- this falls squarely, I believe, within the um um the standard fees that, that um we're being charged. And there are some things in here from a, from a legal standpoint that I would um I, I would run by Jay Talerman. Not, again, not to change the, the uh, the substance of them, but um uh just in terms of, of terminology, uh I mean, simple things like um uh, you know, saying, you know, the proponents. First of all, proponent, is that a, is that a term? Is that a term from planning board land? Because it's not defined in the uh regs.
Yeah, it is a define, uh yeah. Sorry about that.
Okay, so I, I um I, I would drop in that definition or reference back to a definition that you all um already have. Um and just, I, I don't know, Jay Talman might disagree with me, but, but for instance, the language says must provide. You don't see language like that in, in regs or statutes. You usually see shall. I don't know why. But that is the uh, that's the uh, the, the verb of choice. Um and the same thing is true for um under the residential enforcement. Um. For instance, it says the building department will then follow up based on their ability contacting both homeowners regarding the concern. I would suggest, again, I would have Jay Talman take a look at it. I'd clean that up a little bit and just make it tighter, tighter. And then where it says a letter may be issued regarding the complaint, is that a letter? What, what's, what is the, wh- wh- what would that letter be? Is that a letter evaluating the complaint or summarizing evidence? Um what, what's, what was, what's the intent of that?
Yeah, so our intent was
You see the language I'm talking about?
Yeah, I do. I think the intent was that usually an opinion is made by uh the building commissioner in, in her formal um documents that she sends back to people filing complaints. So I think we were of the same vein, whatever that letter would be, whether it is no, I don't find a violation. Yes, I do find a violation. So um basically what, what she identified in her own discovery.
I guess I'd clarify that then, that, 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 that um what the purpose of the letter would be. You know, a letter may, may be issued by the building because I don't think it says who would be issuing it. A letter may be issued by the building department. Uh I don't, again, I haven't dived into this, but something like summarizing the, the, the results of any investigation and um um, you know, setting forth a recommendation or something like that, that, that indicates what the purpose of the letter is. Um. And the, the last sentence there, additionally, a site visit for visual observation of the lighting that may be arranged with one or both of the homeowners. Um. I guess I would, my inclination would be to, to either leave that out because that's something that the building inspector could do regardless of whether or not that language is in there or be more specific about what the intent of that would be. Um. But, but I think the, the simplest route, rather than listening to my ruminations, is I would have Jay Talman take a look at this because I think there is, again, the substance of it, I agree with completely. I just think there's some tightening up that'll potentially prevent problems down the line about exactly what needs to be done by the building inspector in response to a complaint. Uh fair enough.
Yeah, certainly, Mr. Healy. And I know that you and I had uh lengthy conversations around that, so I really appreciate your feedback. And I will tighten this up and then um send it over back uh to you so you can forward to um Attorney Talerman.
Yeah, Jay has been, at least in, in, in the, what, whatever, two months or so, he's been terrific about the timing and, and substance of his responses. So I suspect you'll get something back pretty quickly.
Wonderful. Thank you for the advice.
Yep, that's it for me. Thanks.
Great. Marty, thank you for coming. I know that you're uh, you're tied up at the moment, but I think my questions were answered as well. So thank you very much. And I apologize for not getting it on the sooner. That was a mess up on my part.
Thank you for having me. Have a good night.
Thanks, you too. All right, we're going to shift the agenda around um just a little bit. Um. Chelsea, do you want to wait on the mass piece or? And, and would you want to do that now? It's up to you. I know we only have Marty until eight thirty, so.
Yeah, I think Dr. Alker was going to try to join, so um I had originally told her eight.
Um, okay, so we'll, we'll start with, okay, why don't we just um start with the um downtown district and then Chelsea, if we need to, to jump in based on, I think it's important that Marty partake in those discussions before he moves. So um that being said, um just for anybody that is watching, last night, the planning board had a meeting. They had gone through the zoning bylaw, the design guidelines and the map. And they took positions and they had done some edits and um to bring back to the board for us tonight. So Vanessa, if I can share my screen, please. I will bring up the first document. And I know most of us were at the meeting, but I know um Marty that you were unavailable. So I thought we would just go through them like planning board did. We'll go through, kind of get our feedback on the comments and then we'll open it up. I know um I see Ms. Conley's out in the audience too. So um again, we'll do similar. We'll go through it first and then we'll have um Julie come in as well. So bear with me two seconds. Can everybody see that? Yes, no? Okay, great. All right. So hi, and Karina, I give, will give uh major kudos to Karina to uh go through this document and um um, you know, highlight it. So as we can see, Julie had suggested some comments. Those are going to be in yellow, Marty. And uh planning boards edits are going to be in red. So the first change that was made was it was confusion between open space and green space. So we added a um definition for what that is because it's twenty percent green space and it's not really an open space because the definitions are different. So a green space um definition was added. So I guess we, we can start there. Um Marty, I'll let you read that. And Andrew, um I guess we'll start with you. Are you comfortable with the definition as written, based on the conversations last night?
Yes.
Okay, uh Chelsea? Yes, Mr. Stivers?
Yes.
All right, and Mr. Healy?
Yeah, it just, I, I, I would have done well on this SA- SAT um question. Pervious, what does pervious mean?
So.
Not impervious.
Right. Exactly, Sam. I know that was going to be what I was going to say.
Okay, it's a word though. It's not, it's not just a uh, a one we made up by dropping the IM. I've just never seen it before, but.
Yeah, no, I, I would imagine if, if uh Karina says it's a word, it's a word. This is, this is her forte.
Okay, fair enough.
We didn't want was, we didn't want um concrete or like a blacktop to be included in the green space. I think that's what she means by pervious because impervious would be like a road or it was more like a cobblestone or a peystone or, you know, something along those lines. So.
No, but the, but the, the, the rationale for having it in there makes perfect sense, so I'm fine.
Okay, so we'll move on. The next discussion that came up was on the mixed use. Um one of the things uh Julie in yellow had suggested, because there was a lot of question on only having ten percent of the ground floor being um um commercial. So what the planning board did was, one of their main comments, they said was that this is this as written, what they felt was a more of a housing bylaw than actually trying to drum up business for the downtown district. So they had added uh that residential dwelling cannot exceed forty percent of the gross floor area of the above ground level floor space of the building. So basically, they don't, they didn't want apartments being put in a basement potentially. Um so we, we hadn't discussed this, Marty, as, as a board yet, so um.
Can I just, Lisa, above ground means first floor and up?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And is that clear from the language elsewhere in the um uh in, in either this zoning um uh article or elsewhere? It just because, I mean, above ground level floor space, I mean, you could interpret that to be above the first floor level. And obviously, it sounds like that's not the intent, excuse the intent. Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll just go loop around again because we hadn't even discussed this piece either, Marty. So um let's go with um Mr. Stivers, your thoughts on this piece?
Yep. Okay, and Lisa, to cut to the chase, uh I'm okay with all of this, as a matter of fact, in terms of this document. Um I would uh, I think the FAR ratios are too tight, but I'm not going to argue about that one. So again, I'm on board with all of the recommendations here appreciated, so.
Okay, that actually does streamline it. I, I guess I'll ask Andrew the same question. Uh are you?
I, I am too, and I, I was at the entire meeting last night. It went very long. I thought it was good because the planning board really rolled up their sleeves and went through this uh line by line and gave their input. And that was a very, very positive um development. We really want to have the planning board's support for this. And I think, you know, Mr. Morris basically said at the meeting, you know, this is our position. And um for each comment, there was all, you know, reasonable. Um and this reflects public input in um several um public hearings. So it's appropriate to, for the planning board to make these suggestions in response to that public input. So long and the short of it, I'm in the same position as Sam. I, I am okay with all these changes.
So Marty, I will come back to you, but Chelsea, um I don't know your thoughts on?
So I, I agree with um Sam and Andrew. I think um planning board did a great job of listening to all the feedback um and kind of giving their rationale for all the changes that they made last night. And I don't, I, I support um everything in here, so I'm good.
Okay, and, and so do I. So Marty, I think just to speed this along a little bit, I'll just zip through them and just, uh just so you're aware and we can answer any questions as a whole, as we all heard.
Lisa, maybe I can, I can fast forward it as well. Um again, my, my mantra, just generally and particularly, you know, um um for purposes of this, is I'm, I am loath to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And um um the only thing I guess I would like to hear is i- if there are, obviously, the EDC has been incredibly involved with this.
Yep.
And if there are um um, if there's language that's been adopted by the planning board that the EDC has some issues with, I guess I'd like to hear that. Um I, I think I, I will, I will preview it by saying that would be a very, it, it, it's going to be a very high bar for me. Uh because again, I think that, that the, the uh, that the process here is important, the way this process is played out is important. And um uh, you know, having a Board of Selectmen, the planning board, and ideally the EDC all in favor of the same language is incredibly important here. So I guess with that sort of as a preview, if there, if there is some language in here that, that you said Julie was in the uh um, you know, in the queue, I guess I'd like to hear that and with the understanding that it's a pretty steep climb to, to get me to think that, that what the planning board has done here is problematic.
Okay, so let's, why don't we, it does, makes total sense. So let's bring Julie over, please.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
We can, Julie.
I apologize. I'm actually out walking my dog at the moment, but um um logistics today were crazy. But um thank you, everyone, and thank you to the planning board. And, and I know some of you saw the planning board meeting last night. We're participants in it, so um I don't want to beat a dead horse. And I think that, you know, we came to, you know, I think some of the changes make a lot of sense. And, you know, hearing everyone's um favorability for this version right now. And, you know, hearing everyone's favorability for this version right now. I'm gonna limit my comments, because I think a lot of them, I'm fully in agreement with what Marty says about, we certainly don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good. My concern is that with the multitude of chips that have been made away at, at the last version, that we're actually, in some senses, undermining the intent of the entire bylaw. If we remember, the intent of the bylaw is to add by right, mixed-use zoning. And I think some of the restrictions, and I'll touch on just two of them. One being that 40% is the maximum amount of residential space permitted. I think that if we're looking at what we envision, which everybody has agreed to multiple times, a three-story building, potentially, with commercial space on the first floor, you, if we have residential on the top two floors, that's not, that's gonna be more than 40%, just by, by simple math. So, again, I think that sort of undercuts the by root, by right use element. Again, this by right only for use that we were trying to get at. And my second point is, has to do with the FAR. Again, Judy Barrett, Arizona Consulting, very, very strongly advised against using an FAR metric. She suggested that instead, we use a simple floor area ratio. Mareka, who I'm not sure is on right now, but she, she confirmed, we've looked at multiple towns. Most towns similar to us still do use a lot coverage ratio. And I think that's cleaner, I think it makes more sense. However, I don't want to harp too much on that, if nobody wants to do that. But I just think it's an easier metric to use. I think it's, it's something that everybody understands. People can understand what 70% lot coverage is, more than they can understand what a FAR is. However, if we do wanna use the FAR, as I said in my email last week, I strongly suggest a two-tiered approach to allow for variation in lot size. And my reasoning is this. I understand people's concerns about, about FAR, and having it too big, and having too big of a building. However, if you practically look at the spaces that could potentially be available downtown, a .3 FAR, and again, we had all agreed on .35, it's been .35 for several months. And I requested if you raised to .5, and in response, the planning board lowered it to .3. I just wanted to point out that, for example, you know, the lot I always picture is the 2 East Main Street lot, just because I know there are other properties available, but that's the one real sort of blank slate. A .3 FAR, which is what is in the version of the document you're looking at, would allow for 9% lot coverage on a three-story building. Just picture a 9% lot coverage footprint of a building on that lot. It just doesn't make any sense. Even if it were only a two-story building, that would still be, I believe, a 15% lot coverage. It just, it would look ridiculous. And so it sort of just undermines the whole point. And again, why we're doing this is because in 2008, the master plan said, we need mixed-use residential, commercial, by right. The Shop See report said the same thing. That's a report that the planning committee, the planning board, and the Board of Selectmen blessed in 2017. The ULI report said the same thing, and not only that, this all comes back to the residents. This is what the residents want. We've seen this in multiple surveys. We saw this in the survey that EDC did a few years ago, which I've spoken about many times. But also, more recently, the, the Master Plan Committee survey came up with very similar results. These are the things that our residents are looking for. And by slicing and dicing into all of the metrics, and by, and by having such a small FAR, I really think that undermines, I really don't think from somebody who's coming in and looking to do a project, a proponent, I don't think this changes much for them. And, and I hate to say that, and again, I'm the last one who wants to throw away the, 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 the good for the perfect. But, you know, we've all compromised a lot, and I'm more than happy with the rest of the changes that the planning board expressed last night. But, but those two, I really think, are really critical to the successful implementation of the bylaw. Not the successful voting, but the successful implementation into being something that is the outcome that we're looking to achieve here. That's all.
Thank you, Julie. So, one thing I wanna say as far as the .35, and going down to the .30. If I'm not mistaken, and I know I've had conversations, this has come up prior, and it may have came up at a, at a planning board meeting, I'm not sure, is, based on the lot size, I know we keep using 2 East Main Street. I thought initially, when this was being looked at, that came in at a .33 FAR. And I'll double-check on that, Julie, but I'm pretty sure that's what it came in at. So it's basically just changing the footprint of the building down to a .3, so it's only 3%. And again, I can, I'll, I wish I had the lot size in front of me, to do what the FAR would be at a .30. So, I guess for me, it's, if you look at a lot, and you look at a.
FAR issue, but Julie, I completely understand what you're saying. I just think that, in terms of what's, you know, possible, it seems like we were at the point where this is really what's possible. Because I think, I, I came to the belief, you know, a couple of months ago, that one of the most important things for the success of this would be to get planning board support, and and that's what we heard last night from, from the planning board, was, you know, that they didn't wanna revisit these numbers. I think, you know, this is a start, and also, you know, the EDC deserves a tremendous amount of credit for where we are. And, you know, when one of the, it's really at least a two-year process to get to where we are. And in one of those phases, the EDC asked the planning board if they would be interested in drafting the bylaw, and that wasn't agreeable then. But in a kind of a roundabout way, we kind of have come back to, there's now been so much input on this draft by the planning board that in some ways, you know, the numbers have been drafted by the planning board. And, so that was one of the things that, you know, the, the EDC had looked for, you know, a year or so ago. So, anyway, the EDC is the one that really kicked this whole thing off about two years ago. And we would never be where we are without the work of the EDC. So, it all comes down to the, you know, the good versus the perfect, and I'm okay with going with the good at this point.
Right, thank you. Marty?
Yeah, the, the FAR has always sort of baffled me, and it continues to. So I'm gonna move on to the first one, just because it baffles me less. What is the, just from a pure math standpoint, I get Julie's point. If you're talking about a three-story building, I mean, really, even if you're talking about a two-story building, the 40% would either require that the residential above the first floor be a smaller footprint, and, and, and seems to eliminate the possibility of a third floor for residential. Am I, am I understanding your point, Julie?
That's correct.
Okay, what, I, what is the, was there a, was there a rationale discussed last night? And again, I apologize, I was just, I was in the middle of Tennessee and unavailable to, to sit in on the planning board discussions last night. But what is the rationale? Where does the, where does the 40% come from? Does anyone know?
So I think the rationale, Marty, was that this isn't being, this is being pitched as mixed-use development to bring businesses to downtown. And it's not a housing bylaw. And by allowing the majority of it to potentially be housing, then planning board views that as a housing bylaw versus a, a true mixed use that is to, you know, bring diversity and to bring businesses downtown. Because that's really what, this has been pitched as all along, to bring, you know, small-scale, you know, we've talked about the brewery, the ice cream shop, the bakery, the, what everybody would like to have, the little pub. You know, that's how it's been pitched, and I think that's how planning board viewed it, is that now it's, in their mindset, this is now not just a housing bylaw. It's, it's a true mixed-use bylaw. And Andrew, Sam, Chelsea, can, you can all jump in to expand on that if you'd like. Or not.
Let me just, and maybe, I didn't see Dorian's name, but it just, I just, I agree that, 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 you know, the, the, or at least a primary thrust of this has, has and should be, the, you know, bringing some commercial vibrancy to downtown. But, and again, you know, particularly over the last year and a half, you know, we as a board, and we as a community, have been talking the talk of diversifying our housing supply. And you know, this, this, what worries me is this is an opportunity that may be missed to, to realize that. And, you know, mixed use is exactly that. It is both commercial and housing. And I just, I think Julie makes a good point. And I guess I'm just, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how we address it, because it sounds like the planning board report on this, and the planning board recommendation is going to be the .40. It sounds, Julie, like you or the EDC may be willing to, if the selectmen adopted the zoning language that the planning board has adopted, that, that the EDC, and who knows, maybe Shop See, would be interested in possibly seeking to amend that language to extend the percentage, so you would have more of an opportunity for housing as part of the mixed use. Is that a, is that a fair characterization of where things might stand?
Well, Marty, if I can just add, so Jesse Stein is on Shop See, and he was commenting for Shop See that with the 12.5% that's in there, it'd be like one in every four units. And he was one that agreed on the 40% as well. So I'm just gonna throw that out there, I'll let Julie respond to that, but.
Okay.
Sure, and Marty, I, I think I'm actually trying to make that amendment now. And I'd rather make, talk to you guys about it now than, than at town meeting. But, yeah, you know, I really think you hit the nail on the head. Even in a two-story situation, we would have to go and get a special permit to have a commercial space with a residential space above it, assuming that both the first and second stories are the same square footage. So again, if our goal and our initial intent was that we're gonna have a by-right mixed use, that kind of undermines the entire thing. And again, this is not a housing bylaw, but mixed use is housing with resident, is, is housing with, with commercial. So I don't, you know, nobody, the EDC doesn't have an interest in, in making this the housing bylaw by any stretch of the imagination. But mixed use is sort of the modern way you make a community vibrant. It diversifies housing, it allows for walkability, it, you know, it, it affects the Economic Development Committee. Only that diversity and housing stock is actually an economic goal as well. Because we have, you know, businesses out here who are struggling to attract talent, because, you know, a 28-year-old in Boston doesn't want to maybe move into a $900,000 colonial in Southborough. We need diversity in housing stock. So this is one of the goals. It's not just an EDC goal, but it's a goal of, you know, it's a, it's a master plan goal. It was in 2008, it still is today. And mixed use was, has been, again and again, we've spent, the town has spent tens of thousands of dollars in consultants and surveys and, and reports that have said for 13 years that we need mixed use. And by restricting it to 40%, it basically undercuts the right to have mixed use by right.
Okay, got it. Here's, I could be wrong, but, but vote counting is important on all of this. I think that, I, I think that where we're gonna end up is that the selectmen, whether it's tonight or in the short term, are gonna support as, as part of, as the, as the proposal that goes in the warrant, the language that is been amended by the planning board. It's just a pure vote counting. I'm gonna think about it, and you all are obviously gonna think about it from a proposed amendment. Ultimately, the town's gonna have to decide on exactly what you are describing. And as I said, we've been talking the talk for a while about, about, you know, it's not just the Boston's and Brockton's and Fall Rivers of the world that are responsible for diversifying housing supply. It's also the more affluent communities like Southborough. And if we're serious about that, then maybe we need to be serious about making sure that, that the mixed use you're describing is clearly a part of the zoning article. And you may well have at least one member of the Board of Selectmen who is very much in support of that proposed amendment. But I don't think the change you're pushing for is gonna happen tonight. That's my read of the room.
Alright, thank you. Julie, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Still there on mute.
Okay.
Julie? Can you hear me? Sorry.
We can hear you now, go ahead.
Um, you know, Mr. Healy's first comment was, he was gonna skip the FAR, because, you know, it's very difficult to understand. And I think that's all the more reason to switch to a, to the more common and the recommended lot coverage percentage, which adequately restricts, because we have restrictions on setbacks, we have restrictions on height. So I, just for everyone's consideration, I think that's the point. FAR, people don't know what it is, a percentage of lot coverage of impervious services. People can understand what that is and picture it, and I think that's a better metric, and that's all. Thank you, everyone.
So, the one thing I'll say is, I don't know if Mimi wants to add anything. I see that, now I can see that she's out in the attendees. Mimi, if you'd like to add anything to the discussion that we're having on this regarding the 40% or even the FAR, if you would raise your hand. Otherwise, I'll just assume that you are just watching. Okay, so can we bring Mimi over, please? Good evening, Mimi, welcome. You're muted?
Alright, how's that?
There you are. There you go. Hi, Mimi, welcome. Thank you for attending our meeting after your marathon meeting last night.
Wouldn't miss it for the world.
Great, so do you have anything to add about any of the discussions or the questions that were brought up tonight?
I would just say a couple of things briefly. First of all, the FAR, zoning cannot be looked at in a vacuum. The downtown district is part of the entire zoning code. The rest of the entire zoning code is floor area ratio. The second thing is, back when, a few years ago, when we had the, a new draft written of the entire zoning code by the same consultant, Judy Barrett, it was all floor area ratio then. And that was, you know, a little less than 10 years ago. So I don't know when, all of a sudden, lot coverage is, is the new latest and greatest thing. But I don't think it really has the track record of whether it really works any better or not. You know, just because that's the thing that the consultants recommend today doesn't mean that it necessarily is, is any better or any worse than the floor area ratio. But I think it's important to keep the, the code consistent, and the whole rest of the code, all the other zoning districts are floor area ratio. The other thing on diversity of housing. Um, the other thing on diversity of housing, uh, we allow multifamily housing in the downtown district. Um, albeit by special permit, but that's not allowed anywhere else in town. And you can still, the reason for the forty percent mixed use is, this is um, supposed. To be promoting commercial development downtown, so it should be a majority. Commercial building rather than a majority residential, which was how it was originally written. That only ten percent of the building was required to be commercial and that leaves you with ninety percent residential. And we heard a lot of feedback through the hearings that people were concerned that this was just a housing by law.
Um. Um, Mimi, can I, this is, this is, Marty, how are you?
Good.
Um. Most commercial places that you see in a downtown area are. Either entirely commercial or if they are mixed use, the way the mixed use is divided is the commercial is on the. Ground floor and the residential is above and just by pure math. Even if you just had a two-story structure, that would be fifty-fifty, which is more than obviously forty. Um, and if you had a three-story structure, it'd be thirty-three. Um, and I'm just, I I get, I get that there's a concern that that that. This simply not be, you know, ju-just a, a um, um, a housing by law. I don't, I don't, I don't think a. Reasonable read of it, it is that it is. Um, the clear focus of it is on um, commercial and mixed use. But I'm wondering why that math isn't important in the discussion.
Well, there's nothing that preclude you from having residential and commercial on the same floor. One of the reasons um, that we didn't require. Uh, just residential on the first floor is that we heard feedback that um. Flexibility was desired if someone wanted to put a residential unit on the first floor along with the. Front-facing um, commercial so that it would be ADA compliant. So this just allows flexibility instead of saying you must have only uh, commercial on the first floor.
But that's dealing with the first, if you, I mean, I get that if we're, if that were applied per flaw, floor. But it's applied for the entire building. In other words, if you had, if you had it, if you had it. Really, you couldn't even divide it fifty-fifty between residential and commercial on the first floor with the forty percent. Um, cap. Um, again, it just, I get that that the concern about it not being a housing by law. But I I I also hear Julie in terms of saying this is, this is um. Defeating in large part, the idea of of promoting a diversified housing stock in downtown. By by um, again, limiting to a-any development there to. Be sixty percent commercial and forty percent residential for the entire building. Um, which pretty much says you're limited to. Um, you know, one, one floor of a three-story structure or um. What would that be? Uh, if you had a two-story structure and commercial on the. Bottom floor, then twenty percent of the second floor would also have to be commercial. Um, so it doesn't even seem to strike a balance between commercial and housing, just from a pure numbers standpoint. So that's, uh, again, I I hear, I I hear what you're saying in terms of the first floor, but it doesn't, that doesn't. Address the the arithmetic issues for the entire building.
Well, you can have commercial on the second floor, the third floor, you could have a, you know, a law office, some uh. Quieter commercial space on the the upper floors. There's nothing that precludes you from mixing the floors. It just offers flexibility for a proponent instead of directing where commercial can be and where residential can be.
Okay, I I I I I understand your response. Thanks.
All right, Mimi, thank you, much appreciated.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Thanks, you too. So, um, I guess, I guess at this point, um. Based on, you know, the initial poll of of where we're at, I mean, I would ask if there's a a. Motion to um, accept the downtown district. Version, let me see if I can pull it up again, sorry. Um. Yeah. There with me one second, version, um.
Version nine.
Version nine as edited, um, with planning board edits dated nine twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, roll call vote, Ms. Melonowski.
Aye.
Mr. Dennington.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Mr. Healy.
Uh, Mr. Healy is, is aye, but I I I. Um, wanna point out my reservations with the two, with the, particularly with the one provision that that um. Um, Julie raised and and um, I I think it's appropriate that this is the. That we support this being the language that goes in the warrant, but that does not bind me for uh, any arguments down the line. Fair enough?
Fair enough. And Brashio, aye. So, that's great. Um, Marika has her hand raised. Um. Marika, if it's adding something new, that would be great if we can bring her over. Um, we wanna get through the rest while Mr. Healy's here and a vote has been taken. So, uh, you're muted. You're still muted, Marika. There you go.
Hi, sorry, can you all hear me?
We can, welcome.
All right, thank you. Um, I just, I mean, I just joined, um, you know, I didn't, I didn't hear the beginning of your conversation. I just wanted to point out something that um, I just wanna make you aware if you're, I mean, maybe you already figured this out, but. All these um, development standards work together. Um, so if you are going to change one um. One number, that will have an effect on on other things. Uh, and when we brought this to the architects, they they had a tough time making it work. So if you have like a a three-story restriction, you're lowering the height of the of the building size. You are um, limiting, um, you know, your residential um, uses to forty percent. And you're having a very restrictive um, floor area ratio of zero point three. Um, you have to think if any developer is actually gonna do anything because for them, it has to be. A wise investment. I mean, if you just look at the two east Main Street lot and if you have an FAR of zero point three. And I think Julie explained it very well, and I I really don't understand how people um, have difficulty with understanding what is a floor area ratio. Cause there are multiple diagrams and it's not that difficult. Um, if you. Uh, uh, and floor area ratio zero point three means you can only use thirty percent of your lot uh, for a building of one story. If you have two stories, you can only use fifteen percent of your lot. What, if you have three stories, you're gonna have a very, very awkward, I mean. A very awkward building, uh, you can't use, use the land. Um, so so that's why we are, we are trying to say that a lot coverage would be better. Um, but I mean. You know, it's fine to stick with FAR and the EDC has has ta-taken their position that they're okay with that. But at least make sure that your development standards work together and don't change one. Uh, when it doesn't work with another one. So you have to see this as a whole and that's, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and there's no other hands raised. Thank you, Marika. So Marty, the 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 second document we have is. Um, just the design guidelines and I don't know if you had a chance to look at those. That really is nothing for us to vote upon. That was crafted by um, Julie Conley sat on it. I sat in on it, Michael Weisham from Historical sat in on it. Um. Mimi sat in on it and Sarah Hoker, uh, and that's how the dra- the document was drafted. It's not something that needs approval from this board. Um, but Planning Board just wanted feedback. Um, Andrew, go ahead.
I just wanted to add for for Marty's benefit, um, that part of the discussion at last night's planning board meeting, I thought was very. Encouraging, um, the planning board seemed to, um, particularly Mr. Morris. Really liked the um, the current version of the um, the design guidelines. Um, everyone seemed to. Think that the working group between the Historical Commission, Board of Selectmen, Planning Board and EDC had worked well together, so. Um, that's a, I think that's a really good sign.
So let me just bring them up, Marty, really quickly. I think one of the things that people liked a lot about them was there were pictures that encouraged you to do things or discourage you. From doing other things. Um, and this is the edited version. I'm just gonna try to get to a couple of the pictures. Uh, the map. We'll get to the map next, but she has inserted a new picture of the map as well, uh, if we support that. Um, but through it, it gives a little bit of history, you know, on what was important in the town with the historic register. Some of the goals are. Um, to enhance it as a commercial area to restore and protect the historic character. But I should go further through the 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 document. It talks about building placement and orientation and it gives you guides, which is, we found very. Appealing, um, and it was very well received last night, you know, as you go through it. So people have an idea of when you're talking about building mass, you know, what what we're looking for within the design guidelines. So again, there, I don't believe there's a a vote required, there isn't. Uh, because it's the Planning Board's design guidelines, but if there was any further comments, um, you know, we could certainly add them.
Lisa?
Uh, hold on one second, Sam, let let Marty go first and then I'll go to you.
Yeah, well, I I, again, I've not, uh, the, the process you've described gives me um. Um, a great deal of encouragement, um, in in terms of the product. I haven't. Um, again, um, circumstances of my, of my travel the last five weeks have precluded me from. Um, taking a good look at these, so um, the the process you've described sounds good. I'll, when I. When I get back to Massachusetts, I'll have a chance to um, look at these and 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 we'll take a look at them in in greater detail. It's, it's good that it's not up for a vote tonight. That's good. That's a good thing.
All right, Sam, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just echo Andrew's comments. I think this was a good process, a very productive discussion, and I'm fine with the proposed version in front of us tonight.
Okay. Chelsea, I might as well just ask you while, while we're asking. I also, obviously I helped craft them, so I'm fine with the discussion and where we ended up last night. I agree. Okay, so that being said, there's no vote or anything required of us now. The last piece is, and Marty, I can explain this, Karina did a great job. So what you see in the light pink plus this dark darker here is, these are the split lots. So what was discussed and voted last night was to um, leave the split lots in the current zoning, which is the. Downtown Business Village and also to exclude, there's a one acre. Let's see, parcel for CSX that you can see here that there was some concern with. So, um. This, this is the recommended map. Uh, we've had, uh, we got a couple of emails today with positive feedback from resident on Lata Squama today responded as well. So basically, it's cutting your downtown district off. This is where Ted's towing is, so it's basically cutting it off at Ted's towing. It's not allowing the. Downtown district to go into the split lot areas. This is the split lot next to Falcone's. So that's keeping them within the current zoning, so any rights they currently have, they will continue to have as they move forward. Um, so that was what was proposed last night. That's what Planning Board agreed to, and there's just a bigger close-up. I think Karina did a great job on the map. Um, based on the discussions that we had last night, so um.
Is the map up for a vote?
Yes, because we would have to put the the map um, within the the downtown district. So I I am very supportive of the map.
Yeah, no, I've, I've always thought that 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 um, uh. Again, I hadn't seen the the exactly how the, how the line would be drawn, but the idea of of. Preserving the rights of the folks that they currently have by simply cutting a lot of the district makes the easiest. And the most elegant sense, so I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the map as proposed.
Okay, we'll go around. Andrew?
I support this map.
Okay, Mr. Stivers?
Um, as I've stated before, my personal view is I would not change the map. I've been unconvinced by a lot of the rhetoric I've heard around this. On the other hand, I appreciate Marty's previous comments. There's value in moving forward with this, so I will support this version of it, uh, at least at this point.
Okay, and I do as well. So, um, that being said, do we have a motion to support the. Downtown District Boundary Map, um, as recommended by Planning Board dated nine twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Ms. Melonowski.
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Mr. Dennington?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
With some reservation, aye.
Okay, and Ms. Brashio with no reservation, aye. All right, thank you very much. So that takes care of that line item, much appreciated. So Marty, while we still have you, we're gonna skip around in the agenda again, and we're gonna go to other matters A and B. So let me stop sharing this and Chelsea is Heather. Dr. Elker, sorry.
She is here, we can bring her over.
Okay, and then Chelsea, I'll hand this off to you for.
Okay.
You and or Dr. Elker.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so I just wanted to give the board an update on the mask mandate extension. Um, so as you remember, in August, we took a position to install a mask mandate. Um, in municipal buildings in town. Um, since then, the Board of Health has met and would like to continue. That, or it took the position to continue a ma- mask mandate extension indefinitely, given the. Um, large number of cases that um, continue to increase in town, both on the town numbers. Um, and um, the school numbers in in particular over the last week or so. Um, and Dr. Alker can give um, a a more precise update on on the numbers. Um, you know, I think that leads into how do we handle public meetings? Um, and so I think that's a discussion that we can have here. Um, and then I'll just briefly touch on B and then I'll, I'll let Dr. Alker um, fill in anything that I left out and then we can um, discuss. Um, so the Board of Health also discussed with Mr. Hegarty, um, the special town meeting that's coming up on November first. And um, we did not take a formal position, but we met on September. Ninth, I think, or around there, um, and discussed the social distancing component to this. Um, given what we're seeing in town. So, um, we did speak with Mr. Hegarty about doing masks. And six-foot distance um, among residents for during uh, special town meeting. So I just wanted to give the board an update on those two um, positions and I'll let Doc, Dr. Alker talk about the um, specific. Um, you know, number of cases in town. Right, so to, hello, everyone. Um, so to just bring back what Chelsea said about the meeting with Board of Health last week. Um, the three-member board voted to continue our municipal building mask mandate, um, sort of. For the time being, there didn't put, didn't wanna put an end date on it until, you know, further um. Numbers started coming down, basically. And then we also discussed the fall town meeting for November first. And again, with high levels in our community, um, the recommendation was outdoor possible, but if we were going indoor. To do a six-foot distance, um, the um. Risk with someone indoors, even if masked, um, under six feet is real and we don't wanna have a. Super-spreeder event or have folks um, um, closer than six feet. Cause if we did have a case, we would be contact tracing them, quarantining, um, you know, for attending a town meeting. So I do think that that six foot is is really. Critical um, for an indoor meeting. Um, okay, in terms of our numbers in Southborough, I I don't know if you're, you're um. Sort of nationally and locally, unfortunately, with the Delta variant, we've really changed.
sort of nationally and locally, unfortunately, with the Delta variant, we've really changed course here on what we thought were happening with numbers for COVID. We went a period in June and early July, we basically went a month without a case. Last week, we had over twenty cases in one week. So we have really, really gone up. Basically, I'm thinking of COVID right now, as we've had kind of three waves. We're in our third wave. Our first wave was March to May of that very first year. Our second wave, which was the biggest number of cases, went December to about February for Southborough. We had high cases around New Year of twenty twenty one, and then this third wave started slowly upticking in July, but really in August, the number started increasing, and this is now our third wave. So the state reports a two-week total each Thursday, and last week they reported twenty-three cases for two weeks. Twenty-five would be the old system that you would call red. We haven't had this number, this twenty-three number. We had it during our December to February peak. And this Thursday, our number's going to be over thirty for our two-week total, based on what we had last week. So we are going to be quote in the red. They don't actually use that system anymore, but we are in what we're used to if we're calling in the red. We haven't seen those numbers, like I said, since February. So the case count is definitely high. We have great vaccination rates, as we know. Most of these people are not critically ill. Very few are hospitalized, but we have plenty of breakthrough cases, and we have plenty of cases in children who are not vaccinated. So it's about split between those two, between the young children and the fully vaccinated, obviously, few adults who keep getting it, who are not vaccinated. So the numbers, like I said, right now are high. And for whatever reason, we've, since July, we've been a little bit higher than Northborough. For whatever reason, we look at the school district combined. And in Southborough, Southborough last week for school cases was definitely higher than Northborough for school cases. So it's in our community. I can speak a little bit to the schools. The schools last week in the district had nineteen cases, and from my look at the school breakdown, twelve of them were in Southborough schools. Concerning in the schools last week were three cases of probable in-school transmission. That's what we don't want to happen at town meeting. This week, one case of probable in-school transmission. The school this year, in terms of getting spacing and desks and things where they can place people in bigger space, is really challenged due to the full in-person teaching. So that's great. That was mandated by the state. There's no hybrid option. There is no option to learn remotely. So everyone is in school. And when folks are quarantined, if they're an in-classroom contact, there's a test-to-stay program. So about eighty kids today were tested before school, and if negative, able to go to school. Again, that's great, but with the numbers, there's going to be cases because the distancing just is not what it was last year. Last year, there were, for the whole school year, there were five probable in-school transmission. We're already at four. So it's just we have more kids at the schools, which is good, but they're not able to do the distancing they did last year. So the mitigation strategies with the mask and the distancing and the vaccination, we've got good vaccination rates. We're still going to keep working further with that. Just for our Southborough students and the staff is maybe Northborough's district. We've had two fully vaccinated students in school who are positive, and we've had two staff who are fully vaccinated and positive, but overall, the bulk of the cases are in the elementary students who are not vaccinated. What else do you want to know about our numbers? I'm hoping they don't get a lot higher. Yes, Mr. Stivers?
Question, do we know if the bulk of the new infections or the Delta variant of COVID?
Yes. Absolutely.
So is it like eighty, eighty or ninety percent, something like that? So again, given the contagion with that one, seems to me that it's worth being as conservative as we reasonably can to control that.
Right, and the vaccine is still working great. For the four and a half million people vaccinated in Massachusetts, only point seven percent have gotten COVID. Is the data that they have. It's not always quite correct, but because the vaccine information needs to be into the Maven system, which is infection tracking, but so far, point seven percent of our state that's fully vaccinated contracted COVID. But there has been, I think it's today's number, it's two hundred and seventeen deaths in the state for fully vaccinated. So you know, we still need other mitigation strategies, I guess is what I'm saying with the masking and the distancing.
Do we have any new ideas to find a way to get from ninety percent to ninety-nine percent?
For getting our population vaccinated. So we're going to still try at the school, potentially this fall, or have, you know, sort of maybe another event outside the high school, maybe one weekend or something, to try to get like a mobile vaccine. I think really the one-on-one work with the students and their pediatricians, I think a lot of folks has said is helpful, that really, if they have a trusted individual who's going to talk to them about that. But we are going to try to do another event, not sort of in the school, but kind of related to the school, that we will have one other fall event where we're going to try to do a, the state's willing to send a mobile vaccine unit. I mean, we don't have to supply the manpower to do it, but is willing to send a mobile vaccine van, maybe tie that with town or a school event to maybe get one more push to get the students vaccinated.
Send one with the food trucks for the rotary.
Right, right, right.
Got to get vaccine to get a hot dog.
Right.
All right, is that it, Mr. Stivers?
Thanks.
Go ahead.
Yeah, hi Heather, how are you?
Okay.
The state, the state is not mandating masks, correct?
The state is leaving it up to, yes, the state has no mask mandates. Originally, desks in the schools were not going to, but in the last minute, then they did find, they did mandate schools, I think just until October first, they're going to reevaluate. But yeah, the state has said it's now, it's now a local thing. They're not doing it on a statewide level.
Well, I mean, there was a state mandate previously.
The mask mandate ended May thirty first.
Right, and they've, again, the state's looking at the same data that we are, and has determined not to mandate.
They're not doing a state mandate, no.
No. And Southborough's vaccination rate is a lot higher than the state rate generally.
Correct, our vaccination rates are good, but our case rates, like I said, let me just put it in perspective. So last September, sixteenth, the data released, the town of Southborough, two weeks had less than five cases. This September is twenty-three. So there was no vaccine last September, but there was masking and distancing. So our numbers for this September are so much higher.
Marty, if I can just add one thing too. So I know that you haven't been here, but most towns surrounding us now also have indoor masking required for businesses.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand. I guess I, I'm somewhat burdened by the fact that I've got two kids who are statisticians and have filled my head with 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 a statistical approach to looking at this, and I I remain very skeptical that mask mandates are, I understand, I understand why why communities are doing them. I just don't think that they are particularly effective, and I don't think they send a particularly good message in terms of the efficacy of the vaccine. But I, as I said, I'm not going to proselytize on the issue, but I, from a statistical standpoint, I don't think that the evidence supports mask mandates, period.
Well, I mean, it's just anecdotal, but we had May thirty first was the end of the mask mandate. We had June fifteenth, the emergency orders were done with, and it is sort of, sort of mid-June to late-June, folks in general out and about stopped wearing masks. And two weeks after that, our cases rocked back up again.
No, I understand. I understand the other side of the issue as well.
Right.
And reasonable, reasonable people can disagree.
Masking has shown to, to lower but wearing masks do lower transmission. That, that we see.
Well.
This might be mentioned that I think some of these in-school transmissions are at cafeteria, and restaurants have been proven to be a very high-risk event. Again, you're not wearing a mask when you're eating. So there's been plenty of studies that show that eating, because you're not masked, is a higher rate of transmission than if you're sitting together masked.
All right, we're going to have, we're going to have to agree to disagree about some of the the statistics about all this, but, but
I mean, in terms of municipal meetings, and I'm new to this town, I'm new to local, but to me, like, if you're having a town meeting or if you're having municipal buildings, that I would want sort of the general public to feel comfortable to come and transact business.
Well, that's, that's a bigger, that's a bigger question for me, Lisa. I mean, it seems clear that, that I mean, from the beginning of this whole thing, the there have been vulnerable populations, and it sounds like the most vulnerable population now are under twelve. Is that, is that the cutoff in terms of vaccines? It's, it's under twelve people, which means kids. And I worry from a town meeting standpoint that regardless of the six feet and regardless of the masking, that we are going to get a reduced, maybe a greatly reduced number of parents of young children who think it's worth the risk to come to town meeting. That's a perfectly reasonable, rational response to, again, to that vulnerable population. And whether or not that skews our potential, you know, body politic for a town meeting, I think it does. And if it does, if that's something that we're willing to live with, that, that it's, there's a very strong likelihood that a, that a particular demographic is not going to be attending that special town meeting. I think that's a, I think that's a very reasonable conclusion.
And I, I totally agree with you, Marty, because we're living, we're living in that kind of world right now where, you know, we're at a playground and people's phones are going off because our other child is a close contact, right? So I think, I do think that there's a heightened awareness of that it's really here in Southborough amongst our kids, and I do think it's truly a concern. On the flip side of, of that, I think that's why the Board of Health was conservative, and in hoping that we would want to go to three feet versus the six feet, but go on the conservative, conservative route of if we were to host an indoor town meeting, what is the safest way that we could do that to to ease people's minds that we are following the safest protocols possible to conduct the town's business? So I, I do think, I do understand both sides of it, and I think Board of Health, that's where kind of we came up with our position on how we could host it.
Yeah, Chelsea, I agree with everything you said. I just think that it is, what we have to there is absolutely no question in my mind that, that if there is a special town meeting on November one, that that a significant demographic, that being the parents of young children, are going to choose in substantial percentages not to attend, because if, why would you take that risk? And I, I think that's a reality, so the question is whether or not, given that that demographic is not going to be attending in normal percentages and likely very reduced percentages, whether or not missing that demographic is an adverse enough effect to either not have the special town meeting or think about another way of doing it. Because I, again, I think it's a reality. I, I, and Chelsea, you're more in tune with the with the under twelve set than I am, but you know, what, do you have a sense for for taking the temperature of that group? That's my, looking from the outside in, that is my perception of what would happen.
Um, I completely agree with your assessment. I, I don't think that people that I've heard from would put themselves in that position. Given, given where we are today and given the the high number of cases for, you know, unvaccinated people who are not eligible for vaccination, right? I think that's what the issue is, you know. Luckily, we don't, we don't have urgent cases, you know, in Southborough that are, you know, hospitalized.
Correct.
Right, but our kids have no protection right now, and I think that's what, that's what the concern is, and I think where, you know, Board of Health took this position before we've seen, before we had seen all these cases in, in the schools. We do have a scheduled meeting next Wednesday, and this is on the agenda to talk about. But I just, I completely agree. I don't, I do think that you're going to be missing a demographic. I also think that you could be missing some seniors who maybe are not comfortable either, even though they're vaccinated. I think there's a lot of anxiety around being indoors, even if you're masked. So I, I don't disagree with you. I, you know, I, but I also think that we need to conduct business. Now, the question is, is this worth pursuing for this?
So can I jump in here? So I think, Marty, the intent too is, I think we're going to have some level of a little bit more information on our meeting on the fifth. I, I'll be honest with you, I think it's up in the air. It's a fifty-fifty crapshoot right now, whether we're going to have town meeting, but we have to move forward, I think, as if we are, and, you know, my goal was to revisit this on the fifth, to take a look at where we were at in the numbers, where we were you know, comfortable at, to have a better idea, you know, maybe we'll be because I agree, I don't think it's just the younger people you have to worry about. I think it's a lot of the seniors as well. I think you're going to get a lot of the older people as well that are not going to want to take the risk in coming. So I think that's a whole broader discussion, I think, but I think for the fifth, but I think for tonight, I think the mask mandate within the building, I'm comfortable with, obviously, it's the Board of Health's recommendation, so I don't know how we can really say no to what the recommendation is, but my question to the Board of Health would be, as far as meetings go. So it would be extremely hard, I think, for us, and I'll just speak for, as the Board of Selectmen, to try to have an in-person meeting with Zoom with a mask on, until we get the, and I know Mr. Purple's going to give an update on the SAM Zoom technology when we get to his report, but I think it would be very difficult for us to have to be six feet apart, and is that my understanding with the recommendation would be? Heather or Chelsea?
We were talking about town meeting, right, right.
What about like in, in person or meetings within the town structure itself, you know?
We didn't talk about that at Board of Health. We were talking about the November first meeting.
Okay, so but if there's a mask mandate in place, it would make in-person meetings some level of difficult, but I would have to wonder then, again, I know we're talking about town meeting and larger groups of people, but how could we not at least look at some of our selectments meetings, we have, you know, a room full of people. It depends on what's going on and what's happening. How would we mandate, are we comfortable to say that at regular in-person, you know, say a selectman meeting, we're comfortable with having the public come in and pack a room, but we're just not comfortable with a town meeting? So I'm trying to find the compromise in that as we move forward, if that makes, I guess if that makes sense. Because I think town meeting is something we're going to definitely have to consider, but I think more urgent now is the board and committee meetings that we're currently having, and we had taken a position on the, and Andrew, I'll come to you next in two seconds. We had taken a position that, you know, meetings were going to be in person. So that's running out, so we need to make a decision on that. I was just curious if there were any suggestions on how we could accommodate that, and Andrew, I'll go to you next.
Okay, so kind of, we just kind of combined for discussion purposes, A and B, right?
Correct, correct.
So the most immediate thing you're saying we need to So the, the most immediate thing you're saying we need to do is to extend or not extend, um, the mask mandate for, so first, I mean, to Marty's point, this is actually one of the least, you know, um, it's just a, it's just a mask mandate for town buildings. It's not, um, I, I, I don't want to consider a mask mandate for private businesses or going there. Not, not at all. So, and I mean, one thing that I mentioned the last meeting that to me makes me inclined to support extending it indefinitely is that, you know, my own, the company I work at, we do it and it's just going back to what we did before, you wear a mask while you're in common areas. It's not that difficult to do. But, um, this is a quest- question to Dr. Alker, um, just the way I, you know, it, it's a very interesting issue kind of intellectually. You know, I wonder whether the cases is really the right number anymore, because I understand that you want to prevent more and more cases because that's just more transmission that snowballs. It's going to go to a bad place. But I mean, the number that you mentioned that was the most interesting to me was the, the number of people who are fully vaccinated, who had a, a very bad health outcome. Um, so that's the, I, I'm interested in more data on that because, um, you know, I have known, you know, anecdotally within my own family and friends of break, people that get breakthrough infections and, and nothing happens. It's totally asymptomatic. So that tends to make me think.
Right. I think it, I think Mr. Healy alluded to this. It's a little bit difficult to talk about it because you don't want to, I don't think it's talked about because you don't want to sway people from getting vaccine, because it really decreases the likelihood that you get a case. It decreases the likelihood, if you do get a case, you're severe and you're hospitalized. And it does decrease the likelihood that if you did get a case, that you die. However, it happens. And I don't think people are talking about it. Um, and I think partly, yeah, I'm not sure, but so in this, um, state, um, and we we think it's, um, thirty four thousand fully vaccinated folks have got it. I think it's a thousand fully vaccinated folks have been hospitalized and it's, they just released a month, they released this date on Tuesday nights. It's like two hundred and seventeen, there are two hundred and seventeen in this state have died of COVID who are fully vaccinated. So I guess in some ways it's, um, I think with, uh, the summer, you know, folks were, um, recently vaccinated and folks were, um, feeling confident, you know, in terms of, hey, we don't need a mask mandate, you know, and, and that's fine. That was dropped by the state and the state really doesn't have an interest in going there. Um, but the, the, the kind of the, the thought that, hey, I'm fully vaccinated means you're totally safe, you know, and that's your one mitigation strategy. Um, it's, it, it, you could still get, um, you could still get sick. Very unlikely, um, but you still could.
Well, I mean, that, that's helpful. Um, and then on the, the, the next issue about, um, the town meeting, how it would be held, whether it would be held, um, you know, I head into this discussion. Claim to go ahead and hold the town meeting just because of, you know, I'm very interested in this other thing that we talked about before you joined the meeting, a zoning thing, um, which, um, but, uh, you know, I'm listening very carefully to what, um, you know, Chelsea was saying and Lisa was saying, so I haven't really made up my mind. One point that, um, it may become relevant, it's really more a question to Mark. There is a rule about the last two times we had a annual town meeting and then it got the warrant was printed and then it was postponed by the town moderator, I think. There was some rule that once the, once the warrant was, um, printed, there was some restriction on making amendments to articles. And, uh, either, um, the reason I'm thinking about this is I would like to come to bring some start to bring some closure to the downtown, um, issue. Is there the way that you could bring this to some closure rather than keep this open for, you know, potentially four more months of debate, which I don't think any of us really want. Even if it, it, you know, it looks like it may be headed towards an a- outdoor annual town meeting in two thousand and twenty-two. Do you understand my question or Mark?
Um, without a crystal ball, I'm not sure I can give you an answer. So I, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure where you're looking for me to go for that. So, um, apologize. I, I mean, look, I mean, I, I, I'd like to, you know, a lot of people put in a lot of work on this bylaw. And I will also point out that at the town meeting in May, town meeting, um, pretty much universally supported this second position for IT. And, um, we have now gone since May without any action because we also needed now to do the bylaw piece of this and create the position in the classification plan. And while there is a, um, a, uh, an ability for the personnel board to approve a position in the classification plan before it goes to town meeting and have town meeting ratify it, excuse me, after the fact. It really hasn't been done. I'm not, I'd have to go back and I, I'd have to defer to Mrs. Hale to find out if we've used this before. Um, but, you know, if we don't have the town meeting and a personnel board doesn't want to do it that way, we'll have to wait until March or April to get this done. And then it's going to be a whole year from now until we eventually, you know, maybe get somebody in a position. So I, I, I understand the issues of waiting, you know, um, beyond the bylaw. Um, you know, some of these things, it'd be nice to do them now, but do we need to do them? No, it, you know, we could wait, but, but there's a couple that, that, that I do understand. So, um, I guess I'm, I'm trying to commiserate probably more than answer your question, but, but, you know, I, I, I do get it. Um, I do know that, um, the town clerk spent some time. I don't know if Dr. Alker was part of that discussion at Trotty the other day with, um, with our IT manager and taking a look at the, um, at the hall. Obviously, the auditorium doesn't work if you're going to do masking in six feet because you take five hundred and some odd seats and you bring it down to just over a hundred seats. So I think they're looking at the gym. Uh, again, I'm not sure how many seats you can get in the gym with those parameters and the check-in areas. But I think that the auditorium is then going to be used as the overflow. Um, and again, the concern, I think that, um, uh, that Mr. Healy brought up is real. You know, you, people are going to look at this and say, look, is it worth me going out to this meeting? Is there something on here that I think is important enough that I'm willing to show up despite the precautions, despite the issues and the concerns? And does that take away from, you know, a real, um, uh, you know, a, a good vetting, uh, you know, of the bylaw, um, and some of the articles by, you know, it's, uh, you know, a handful of people.
Okay, so this is where I was going with it. Is there some, the downside of this would be, um, you know, spending money to print them, to print a warrant and without thinking that you weren't actually really going to hold the meeting, but if, if there was a, a warrant that was fixed for, uh, a fall town meeting that then got postponed, all those articles would just be, would they be moved forward and just they would appear in the exact same format on the annual town meeting in two thousand and twenty-two? Because that's kind of what we did from,
Yep.
There were articles, you know, ATM twenty that just were, were the same word for word ATM twenty-one because of that rule.
Right.
Maybe that was a vote taken by the board to, uh, when we delayed town meeting, we, we took the position that we were going to bring everything forward that was not put on the consent agenda that we were trying to do. Um, Andrew, I'm, I'm, I'm on the fence. I'm, I'm, I'm not leaning one way or the other on this. That's why I thought we could wait, we could get a little bit more information. I talked to Mark today about, this isn't a large warrant. We're talking probably forty to fifty pages, you know? We, we talked about different options of, you know, maybe not even having to send it out. Maybe there's a way that we can just do something. It won't be as pretty, but do something in-house that would give us the option to get closer to town meeting to, to, you know, to make a better decision.
Yeah, I, I think, I think from a printing perspective, um, the, uh, Ms. Bracio is correct, you know? This is going to be probably, you know, maybe a twenty, uh, twenty page, twenty, twenty-five page warrant, two hundred copies. We'll get a couple of boxes of pretty colored paper. And, um, you know, and we'll, we'll print the warrants in-house. Yeah, the stapling won't look as nice. Yes, the, you know, it won't look as, as pretty, but it will be functional and we can do it, you know, um, the week before. Um, you know, something like that to make sure that we're not going to incur an expense in this meeting, you know, ends up getting postponed, if, if that's what happens.
And I think too, another thing to consider is I don't know what point Mr. Hagerty is going to have to commit to, you know, these companies that he's bringing in to, to set up in, in the gymnasium, the, um, the video equipment and, and whatnot. So I think that, that's another, um, number that we have to get, you know, as far as a date from him. And I think we can have that by the fifth. We can certainly reach out to him as, as we consider that going forward.
Lisa, I agree that another couple of weeks of data would be very helpful here, so.
Yeah. I agree, Sam. So I mean, we, we lose nothing by putting this off to the fifth, other than, okay, we now know the downtown district is, you know, we can send it off, um, you know, with the way we've voted it, we can send it off to, um, county town council, you know, we can start the review process on that. But I think, like, again, for me, the most imperative thing now is, is deciding if we're going to continue. And I don't know that we really have a choice. If the Board of Health recommends a mask mandate for municipal buildings, I don't know how, Mr. Purple, we could, um, maybe on your, pulling your vast experience of, I, I don't know that this board can, can really or should go against that.
I don't think so. Yeah, I, 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 I really can't say that I've ever been in a position in my career, you know, where we've had to try to deal with this. I, I mean, the tough part is that you've got some of the smaller boards and committees, you know, open space, trails, uh, assessors, things like that, then aren't going to get a lot of people to come to their meeting. So having them in the room, six feet apart, masked and meeting is probably, you know, going to meet the, or check the boxes that Dr. Alker has talked about. But if you have meetings like planning board, zoning board, Board of Selectmen, um, you know, the meetings that may draw, you know, a crowd depending on the issues. And we have to spread the board out in the room, spread myself, Mrs. Hale, um, you know, a minute taker. And then we only have so many seats for people to come in. When you exceed that, you're telling people you can't come in because we don't have seats for you. And now, you know, um, you know, Ms. Malinowski has talked about with the virtual component, making sure that we can get as much participation as possible. Now you're not, you, you may not be allowing those people to come into the room that want to come into the room and it becomes a participation issue. Um, it, it's, it's very, it, it's difficult, you know, so either you're going to be uniform about it or what are you going to say? The smaller boards and committees that don't have a lot of participation or don't have a lot of people to come to their meetings, you're okay to meet in person, as long as you check these two boxes, but everybody else, you know, we, we, we just can't do that.
But you know, I think, Mark, there's only two or three committees that are meeting in person now. I think Board, uh, obviously Board of Selectmen was one. We were meeting in person. Um, I think the, the assessors up until we made the mandate, we're meeting in person. And I don't know that they've ever had anybody attend their meetings. And then the ADA committee has requested to be able to meet in person. Um, you know, it's, it's not always easy for everybody to, to be able to view the screen. Um, so I, I, I guess if we would put some kind of guardrails in place that if you want to meet in person, yes, but you have to wear masks and you have to have six feet of distancing between you and the participants in the room. And if they feel that they can do that, again, on a smaller committee, I don't know, we, as we have the Board of Selectmen, how we would do that. But, um, until the new software is put in place, um, I don't know how we do that. But again, I think it's a small number of people that aren't using Zoom right now.
Yeah, I think we stay with Zoom.
Yeah, for now. And, um, but Sam, do you think even for, you know, not giving the option to, you know, knowing that there's, you're putting guardrails in place that you have to be six feet apart, you, the public has to be six feet apart, you have to be masked. Um, I think for, for larger groups, that's going to be a big deterrent. I, but I think for the smaller groups like maybe ADA or assessors, they'll say, okay, fine.
Hey, hey, if we, uh, uh, I mean, I saw the emails from some of the, the smaller committees and, and, and I get their, um, interest in being able to meet in person because there's never more than whatever the number is, five people in a room, and so they can do it relatively easily. Um, so I, I'd be fine, um, uh, allowing that. Allowing, I, I don't like that word. I, I, I'd be, I'd be, I'd be fine letting them know that, that, that they're, they're the, um, that there's not an absolute prohibition against, um, that, that those, those smaller town boards that don't draw crowds, um, meeting in person. The question would be, and Mark, you, if, if you're not comfortable with this, but to have Mr. Purple as the, um, uh, you know, sort of the, 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 uh, the toll keeper, um, and, but you know, Mark, I mean, you, you, you're, you go to a lot of the meetings of these smaller entities and you know whether or not they can, they're going to be able to function in that way. Um, so I, again, I'd be comfortable, if Mark's comfortable playing that gatekeeper role, I'd be comfortable with, um, allowing smaller committees to meet in person as long as they clear it first with Mr. Purple and, um, are mindful of the requirements that have been set out by the Board of Health. I'd be comfortable with that.
And if Mark doesn't anticipate a crowd, if the, some of those smaller committees might have an issue that might draw a crowd, then I think that would be part of the.
Right.
Equation. Yeah, I, I, I'm willing, yeah, I'm willing, I'm willing to be the, you know, the watcher, so to speak. Um, I think that, I, I think it's just going to be reasonable, reasonableness, you know, people need to understand, you know, if I've got this issue, you know, on my agenda that I understand could draw a lot of people, I may need to consider whether I'm really going to do this meeting in person, but, um, you know, um, you know, Board of Health, you know, um, although, um, you know, if given some of these issues, maybe they're going to start to draw a crowd. Um, but, uh, I think that, uh, I, I think that, yeah, I, I, it's common sense. Let's give it a try. Let's see how it goes. And, you know, I'd rather give people the ability to do it and see if we can do it well. And if we can, that's great. And if we can't, then, you know, we may have to recalibrate.
So that.
And, and finally, Lisa.
Go ahead.
Can I, can I just jump in? Because I'm, 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 I'm about to turn into a pumpkin. Um, uh, so two quick things, I, I, Mr. Purple, I'm comfortable with him being the, the gatekeeper. And secondly, I agree with the sentiment earlier that, that the, the, uh, I, I, I think it would be odd for us to, um, uh, you know, countermand the Board of Health's recommendation about the mask, notwithstanding how I might vote if, if it came up for a vote. So, um, with that, I'm going to bow out. Again, I apologize. I'm going to be back in Massachusetts. Um, um, soon and look forward to seeing everybody.
Thank you. Good trip.
Okay, um, before Marty, um, jumps out, so the, uh.
I know, you were so close.
Chestnut Hill Farm license issue.
Nope. That's going to be tabled. We'll, we'll.
Okay, because that's one where I was very interested in what Marty's position was going to be.
No, we're, we're going to get to that one. That's why I put that, I didn't include that in the mix. So Marty, do you want to be included in the vote to continue? If you don't, the mask mandate, uh, with the restrictions we just talked about, uh?
Um, I don't need to be included in the vote. Again, my sentiment is that, is that.
We got it. Okay.
The, the Board of Health's recommendation, we should follow.
Okay, that's fine. So based on that, Mr. Stivers, I think you're, you're right to make this motion. Or do you want me, do you want me to just say it?
Go ahead, please say it. I'll say so.
Okay, that's fine. So, um, I mean, is there a motion that the board continue the mask mandate for municipal buildings as recommended by the Board of Health? We'll do it in two phases. We'll start with that one.
So move.
Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Malinowski.
Hi.
I'm lost with Marty being gone. Everything's switched. Uh, Mr. Dennington.
Hi.
Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
And Ms. Bracio, hi. So then do we have a second motion that, let me think this through here? That, um, for smaller, that we extend the Zoom restrictions for board and committee meetings, except for those smaller boards and committees that can meet the requirements of masking and six feet distancing for members and members of the public.
So move.
Is there a second? Okay, did I say that right? I hope so. Um, Ms. Malinowski.
Hi.
Mr. Dennington.
Hi.
Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
And Ms. Bracio, I. And the only piece that we've left out was that Mr. Purple would, um, let me amend that motion if I may. Amend it to include that Mr. Purple, um, any boards and committees that wish to meet in person have to, I don't want to say clear it, but, um, get sign off from Mr. Purple.
Review their plans with Mr. Purple.
Plans with Mr. Purple. Okay, so on the amended motion, is there a second? Second. All right, uh, Ms. Malinowski.
Hi.
Mr. Dennington. Mr. Dennington. Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
Ms. Brascio, I. And Katie, I'm sorry for totally screwing that motion up for you when we do the minutes.
And Ms. Brascio, can I just make one clarification? So I, because I voted as Board of Selectmen the first time around, I abstained from the vote on Board of Health. And so I'm voting as selectman here. So I was trying to stay consistent on where I voted.
Okay.
We need to get hats for you to make sure.
I know. Which color am I wearing?
Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Chelsea.
I was just going to say, thank you, um, Dr. Alker for joining and for providing all those stats.
Much appreciated. Have a great night. All right, now we're going to go back up on the agenda to where we left off. So Chairman's report. So, um, just a reminder that this Saturday at the Public Safety Building is the CERT and MRC recognition for the over three hundred hours that the volunteers were able to do. I know, um, we've had RSDPs from everybody, so I I thank the board for that. Um, that's just a reminder. Um, Selectmen's office hours, Ms. Malinowski and I had office hours, uh, last Tuesday. We had, um, two people that came. We talked a little bit about the trails and we talked a little bit about the truck exclusion. So Chelsea, do you want to add anything to that?
Uh, nope, it was a good conversation and, um, I always like talking to, you know, residents and hearing their perspective, so.
And we we appreciated the turnout.
Lisa?
Yes, Sam.
Did did somebody circulate the hours, office hours plan? We talked about it at one point. I don't remember seeing an email or something that had that in.
No. I actually pulled it out when I was going through my paperwork from the last meeting today, so I I will take care of that, Samuel. We'll take care of that tomorrow. Um, so, um, letter to discontinue section of Chestnut Hill. I just wanted to acknowledge, um, to Mr. Beals that the Board did receive this. I had the opportunity to speak to him as well. Um, and he was unavailable to come on the fifth to start the discussion on this. So he has agreed to come on the nineteenth, our second meeting in October. Um, so I think that gives us an opportunity as well to get questions that we may have to Town Council, DPW and whatnot, so we can be better prepared for the discussion on the nineteenth. So, um, go ahead, Andrew.
So to that point, so if we're thinking about, you know, information that could be useful for the meeting on the nineteenth, one for me is what do our public safety, uh, departments think about it? For example, fire. Like what if there was a fire in a house on Dairy Dairy Farm Road? How would this road closure affect that?
Okay.
And and Lisa, uh, related related to that, um, uh, given the geography there, um, I see in the warrant, draft warrant that there is an article to spend money to repair the culvert on Northborough Road there. And I think that relates, Andrew, to your point that, uh, if Northborough Road happens to be closed as uh, DPW has proposed at one point, uh, then that certainly affects the travel time. And so I think the interesting question for me for the public safety folks is if Northborough Road is closed, does that create a problem? If Northborough Road is open and Chestnut Hill Road is closed, is that something that's workable? So those kind of, uh, parameters there, I think would be helpful to get, uh, fire and police response on.
So it might be interesting, not interesting, sorry, it might be pertinent to the discussion of anything you can think of between now and maybe we say the fifth, that we can get these questions to Mr. Purple. Thank you, Mark. And we can get them out and, you know, try to get some answers. I think it'll it'll move the conversation along as well.
Um, another is, I looked at the statute that was cited in Mr. Beal's letter.
Okay.
So this is really a question for Town Council.
Okay.
It's chapter eighty-two, section thirty-two. And it seemed to suggest that in order to actually do this, that the Board of, um, the town would need to make a finding that the public way has become abandoned and unused for ordinary travel and that the common convenience and necessity no longer requires said public way to be man maintained. Now here, the road has not become abandoned or unused. Does that mean we could still do it? Um, that's your question, and I think that we would be interested in from from Jay.
Nope, that that's perfect. I wrote it down, Andrew, but if you would forward those, you know, for anything for the DPW. And again, I didn't think of public safety. That was a great one, Andrew, as well. You know, maybe we can get some answers um, in advance of the meeting. So if we could all do that, that would be very helpful. So, okay, um, next up, Members Report, nine eleven ceremony. Ms. Malinowski, is that you?
Yes. Um, so a few of us were able to attend the nine eleven ceremony at the Public Safety Building. Um, and I still can't believe that was twenty years ago, but it was a really nice ceremony, um, beautiful day. And, um, thank you to Chief Achilles and the Fire Department and, um, the Police Department who were in attendance. Um, it was, it was very nice.
All right, thank you. Um, that being said, um, Mr. Purple, Town Administrator's report.
I really thought you were going to skip over me there for a second. I I, um, so I just want to jump backwards really quick. One thing, you noticed that we did table the Cable Committee, um, and for for this evening, uh, the recommendation for the Comcast cable license renewal. That license is all done. It is already, uh, Cable Committee unfortunately couldn't get a quorum last week. Uh, so they couldn't meet to vote on this, uh, to come before the Board. Um, so they're hoping to rectify that on the next week and a half, and we'll have this back before us on ten-five. It'll be great to have, um, all three of those licenses done in current. Um, the, uh, the first item on my report, funding for the HCV traffic study. Um, uh, again, this was, this was born out of the whole issue with Flag Road. Um, the Board decided they would like to take a holistic approach to this. I had sent to the Board uh, a proposal that Ms. Gallagher had, um, had received from VHB. Um, and we're looking at about twenty-five thousand dollars, um, for this to be done. It's going to take probably the better part of two and a half months. And, um, I believe that the intention of the Board is to have this on the special town meeting for November first. So I'm putting together, uh, an article for that, um, to, um, to get that taken care of. The, um, uh, an update, a brief update on on regional dispatch. Um, the, um, the communities of of Hopkinton, Grafton, Marlborough, Southborough, uh, and Westborough, um, are are looking, uh, to put in a, um, uh, a request for a feasibility study uh, to kind of, uh, establish or join a regional emergency communication center district. This is like the first step to take a look at how these things, um, you know, how this would work, what it would mean for each community. And, uh, the study would be coming into each community and evaluating what you do, how you do, and what your needs are. Um, and I I think getting a, you know, giving us information to determine, I believe, you know, um, uh, Ms. Malinowski had had asked the question of, you know, how does this work for us? And are we better doing it on our own? Is there another approach that's better for us? Or, you know, is is joining one of these, um, these larger regional communications um, groups, you know, the way for us to go? Um, I think the question then remains, do we do the larger group study first and then look at a smaller regional study? And so this may be something that, um, uh, that the Board will want to talk about in, you know, a little more detail, and we could bring in, um, the Chiefs to discuss this. But I, you know, and again, have to remember, some of these communities are in different spots. Some communities, um, they're looking to replace their nine-one-one equipment because it's it's out of date or they're adding new, so they have to buy all new. And some communities, you know, have been invested in this idea already. Um, and so everyone's moving at different speeds and we're trying to, so hold people back, bring people forward. Um, and so hopefully we'll be having, uh, a further discussion about this, um, in the near future. And the the last piece, um, is the, uh, item I have the least about, updating about the SAM, um, you know, the Zoom integration software. So the original, um, uh, uh, module that they needed in order to bring the system back up to what it was before is in and it's all set. Um, they're still waiting for the Zoom integration, um, of piece to be delivered. And the best way to put it is, um, it's got a chip in it. So, you know, if you're thinking about cars, if you're thinking about computers, I I talked to Jay, um, Montijo the other day. And, you know, anything looking at computers, he had things that he put in to get pricing back when we hired him that still say backordered. Um, that that, you know, that were unable to get. And, um, you know, and that's how it's been explained to us, um, uh, by by Caitlin over at SAM. And in conversations, there's no updates yet. Um, this was supposed to be middle of September and that date just keeps getting pushed, um, to, uh, a time uncertain. So, you know, I I I know it would make things easier to be able to do things with our regular system in masks. Um, but, you know, to meet in person and maybe that would change the parameters a little bit. But unfortunately, we don't have an update um, on that yet. Um, I do know that, uh, Mr. Montijo is also having conversations with SAM and with their, um, their engineers, um, about the new encoders and decoders for the public safety meeting room in the library, which would allow cable to go live from those locations. Um, but the problem is, is they don't have a fiber network to those locations. So the question is, how could they get on our fiber network? But unfortunately, our fiber network doesn't go to the schools, so it doesn't go back to SAM Studio. Again, this may be, you know, something that we can, um, potentially look at for an additional community compact. Uh, this may be something that we can look at for ARPA, um, to try and and provide that connectivity so that we can, you know, we can do some some more live, um, uh, meetings, you know, from different locations. So again, continues to be a work in progress.
Hey, Mark, I saw that Community Compact just reopened for next year, and technology is a high thing on their list, so it might be a good source.
It did. And and I, and what I will say to you is that, um, uh, the state really likes you to finish one IT community compact before you get another one. And we still have the, uh, Community Compact, uh, the IT grant, the Tom LaFlamme, uh, helped us get to run the fiber network. And they have yet to connect DPW. And there's still a connectivity, um, that they need to, uh, finish up at the Historical Society. Um, so as soon as those are done, uh, Mr. Stivers, absolutely. You know, we need to, we need to have, we need to have them in because I think we've got a good rate, uh, success rate, you know, of getting these these IT grants.
Good.
Is the deadline for that October fifteenth?
Sometime in October, yeah.
It it's sometime in October. I'm trying to, I, I've got my dates mixed up because also the Mass, um, uh, Office on Disability uh, Grant Round is in, is right around that time, too.
So are you, are you thinking that the DPW and Historic Historical Society will be done by then? Or?
No, but I'm, I I may be, I may be looking for, uh, you know, having to make some phone calls, um, to, um, to somebody to see if we can get a a a path. And we've had to extend this because there's been trouble getting chips, there's trouble getting fiber, you know, so we got an extension through, excuse me, the end of December for the grant. The grant was supposed to run out, um, at the end of the fiscal year. And so we have an extension now and and hopefully it can get taken care of. But if we can demonstrate that we have a definitive end line and then putting in another grant and there's not going to be overlap of a new grant and finishing an old grant, I I think then there might be some consideration for that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Purple. Uh, next up, Consent Agenda. We'll go around the horse. If anyone has any holds, Mr. Stivers.
A.
Okay. Mr. Dennington. Ms. Malinowski. Okay, I have no hold. So do we have a motion to approve Consent Agenda items B and C as printed?
Second.
All right, Ms. Malinowski.
Hi.
Ms. Dennington.
Hi.
Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
Ms. Brascio, I. Thank you very much. Mr. Stivers, A.
Uh, seven twenty-two minutes, lines one oh four, one oh five, it says, Mr. Healy made the motion and seconded it. Um, I know he'd like to, but I think I seconded that one.
All right, Sam, thank you. Do you have anything else? That's.
Lisa. Oh, sorry, Sam, were you all set?
Yeah.
Um, Lisa, I had one on that one, too. Um, on row forty-one.
I did, too. Is continuing.
He added that this provision allows a demolition to proceed early if the commission is satisfied that the homeowner is continuing their preservation efforts. I think, I think it, what it should say is something like, has exhausted. Yeah, exhausted or pursued, not, because they're not, if they're, if they're not going to demo, then, I mean, if they're going to demo, then they're not continuing their preservation efforts.
Okay, so how about has exhausted or pursued?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exhausted is probably a better.
Yeah, I had had exhausted on mine, so I had that hold as well.
Okay.
Did you have any other ones, Chelsea?
No, that was it for that. Yep.
And Andrew? I probably asked you this already. I'll come back to you again. Are you good?
All set.
And I'm all set with that as well. So do we have a motion to approve the open session meeting minutes, July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, as amended?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, Ms. Malinowski.
Hi.
Mr. Dennington.
Hi.
Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
And Ms. Brascio, hi. All right, um, Mr. Dennington.
That was me.
Oh, sorry.
Um, can we just kick that to executive?
At our next meeting?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah. Because we are doing executive on the fifth. Okay. All right. That leads us to, uh, Mr. Stivers, C, under Other Matters, update on Halloween property access from Mass DOT. The floor is yours, sir.
Um, I think we're making some forward progress on this. Uh, we've been in contact with, uh, Mass DOT Engineering Department, uh, several engineers there working, um, on the issue and also the Mass dot, uh, real estate people who may have to get involved, not totally clear yet. Uh, Karen Gallagher has actually filed an access permit application. They've got a, uh, electronic system that you have to make the request through. Uh, she's filed it, uh, they've asked for additional information, and it's my understanding that, uh, she's now on the critical path to to complete the additional information they've asked for. And my conversations with the Mass dot people, it appears that this is not an unusual thing for them to do. So there's clearly a track record for them to do this. And one of the comments was that the current, uh, Baker Administration has pushed Mass dot to, uh, allow access to open space, uh, when reasonably possible to people. So it's, uh, I think there's some momentum to do this. But again, we need to get the final paperwork on the application and then see where they go from there. But, uh, so far at least, nobody has said no beyond the initial response was probably not going to happen if you're infringing on the right of way, which we are not in this case. So I remain cautiously optimistic and I'll let people know as we learn anymore. That's it.
Great, Sam, thank you. Any questions? Andrew, Chelsea? Andrew, you look puzzled. Do you have a question?
Uh, you know, I do have a question more about the detail, but maybe I'll just ask Sam later.
You sure?
Sure. I mean, can you just explain this a little bit more? Because, um, where is this? Um, because, um, a couple of meetings ago, when we, um, approved the conservation restriction for the Halloween property, I started to look, okay, where is this? How do I get there? And I've been actually looking for, so I have a, I I know, but I think I know where you're talking about, but I'm not sure. Could you explain it?
Very difficult to get there, actually.
I tried and I couldn't get it there. So I think I know what you're talking about.
I think it's about eighteen acres or so in in two different parcels. It's just north of the Pike, um, across the Pike from Fenn School. Um, there's, there's a little stub that used to be Richard's Road as you're going north on Parkerville Road. Just under the Pike, you can turn right on a little stub road that actually goes
That's, yes.
One part of it. Technically, there are two access points. One, I think on Boswell Lane, another maybe on Hubley. There are paths maybe ten feet wide, one of which is up a hill, and both look like that you're tromping through somebody's yard. So technically, it qualifies as access, but practically speaking, it's very difficult.
Because I I went, I I I looked up, looked it up and found that there was access from Hubley Drive. So I drove up there and tried to find, and I could not. It all looked like private residences, so I.
And that's, that's indeed the issue. And so it turns out that, uh, the Pike right away is a hundred and fifty feet on each side of the center line of the Pike. And right, uh, as you go in that stub road, you will see that the chain link fence, uh, actually goes parallel to the Pike and then takes a ninety-degree turn to the left or to the north for about thirty feet and then continues parallel to the Pike. Apparently, the property they acquired when they built the Pike, uh, Pike actually, uh, was not only a hundred and fifty feet, it was a hundred and eighty feet wide or off of off of the center line of the Pike. So there's a thirty-foot corridor in there that presumably they could give us access to for about five hundred feet down there to get a thirty-foot wide access corridor that would get into that part of the Halloween property that would allow, again, access, uh, much easier for people to get in there and out of there. And there's even a minor amount of parking on that stub road, uh, but not much. So again, they they could do that technically, and I'm hoping that they will. So again, they they could do that technically and I'm hoping that they will see it that way and and give us that access. So that's a practical access that we really haven't had before.
Okay, thank you.
Andrew, that was actually a good question because there may be some people that may watch this later that may have the same question. So that was actually a really good question.
Good, thanks.
And then Andrew will need you with your chainsaw and weed whacker to cut through the path out there to actually make it work.
Not the one on Hubley Lane, because I went there and it really looked like this.
This is the new one. We needed thirty-foot wide path, five hundred feet long, so.
Okay, well, it actually could be a good Boy Scout project, right, from?
Could be, that's right.
Eagle Scout, there you go. All right, thank you, Sam, thank you, Andrew.
Thanks.
So uh next on the agenda is item D. So this, I, Mr. Purple, I'm gonna jump to you in two seconds. So at the request of um the trustees. Uh, they're requesting to, for us to refer this to ten-five, but uh Mr. Purple has had conversations with. Town Council and he also spoke to DA Hayden, so Mark, I will punt this to you.
Thank you. Uh, so I did have a conversation based on the um, the questions that the board asked last time. Um, i- if you recall, when this issue came before the selectmen last year for the one-day licenses. And in my conversation with DA Hayden today, you know, she had said that. The context was a little bit different because I think there was some, there was um some hikes involved with it, but still the one-day uh beer and wine license attached. And um, you know, the, the um, the, the, the comment that that the trustees made as well, this, you know, this falls under educational. And um, the board didn't agree, the board didn't issue the licenses, so the licenses came before the uh, the town again this year in terms of. Um, their, their fall fun on the farm uh Sundays in October. And um, the same question persisted, the board asked, um, and have new council, uh, Jay Talman, take a look at this. And and I had a co- I had some conversations with Jay. I don't have anything officially, you know, in writing from him. Um, but the, the gist of the conversation is that, you know, um, there is a definition for the uh, for educational activities. In, in the CR, um, and. You know, so it's up to the applicant to demonstrate that. The um, the activities at the farm are primarily educational and that, you know, um, you know, that the, the, the sale of alcohol. Um, the food trucks and everything are ancillary to those things. Um, now, if they're not claiming it's an educational use, it, but it it's incumbent upon the applicant to demonstrate, you know, and explain why. Um, and um, you know, it doesn't appear that that they've done that yet. I did have a conversation with um, with, with Ms. Hayden and with Rob Warren, um, who handles a lot of the properties for the trustees. And um, they're still a little bit unclear as to why the board won't approve this. Uh, and so they've asked for a little bit more time um to uh to table the issue until October fifth. Um, dur- and I believe that um, one or both um would attend the meeting on ten-five to, to speak to the issue. But again, um, I think, given the information provided. Council doesn't feel that they've made their case as to this being, you know, an acceptable, uh, an acceptable use.
And and Mark, is it that his concern is that it's it not an acceptable use? Uh, per se, or is it not an acceptable use for the alcohol? Why uh permit? So there's without the, without the uh, you know, alcohol permit, uh. Is it still something that Mr. Talman believes is not permitted?
I, 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 I think that's a hard, well, it's a, it's a, it's a really hard question for me to answer, but for council to answer the question, I really think there's gotta be more information. Provided by the applicant.
Okay.
You know, so is it, you know, my conversation um with, with DA today was, well, you know, everything up at the. Uh, you know, everything at the farm doesn't need to be educational. Well, it doesn't, but I'm using educational simply because that was the construct. That was used for the license request last year. Uh, and and I don't have anything different. So again, it's incumbent upon the applicant, you know, to make the case. And convince the board, because at the end of the day, as I, as I told her today, you know, the board um is the licensing authority. For the town of Southborough for alcohol licenses, be they annual or one day. And so they've got to make the case and this board needs to be convinced and um. And that's kind of how I left it with them.
And I think we need to respect the CR restrictions and I'm very supportive of the farm and the programs. But again, I'll look forward to what town council has to say about that and the additional information they might provide.
Yeah, and I've had conversations, I've, I've kind of kept uh Ms. Danza in the loop uh on this. Um, uh, the um, the current management plan, the conservation have put together as the holder of the CR is um. Several years old. Um, I believe that there is an interest um to um for conservation to take a look at that management plan, maybe refresh it. And maybe um, you know, specifically address some of these things. Um, however, given what we currently have on the books, it's really. Um, uh, it appears to be, you know, based on council's review of it, it appears to be silent on, on a lot of this, so there's nothing helpful. Um, that, that inherently tells you can or can't, so.
Is ConCon meeting before the fifth?
I, I wanna say yes, but I'll have to, I'll have to check.
Ask them if they want to consider this before the fifth, then.
Sure.
Mr. Dennington, anything to add?
No, so it's not like, so this is being tabled?
Yeah.
Okay, that does effectively mean that the October third license is not granted, right?
Correct. And they're aware of it. Ms. Malinowski, anything? Okay. All right, so we're good there. Next up, uh, F, closing the uh special town meeting warrant for eleven-one. Twenty-one. So, um, Mr. Purple sent a note out today just verifying that. Um, there are no additional articles to be included on the warrant, so um. I would ask this board to allow for the extra time and if we have availability potentially for a brief. Meeting, I would say next Tuesday at um, you know, eight o'clock in the morning, a five-minute meeting to just vote to close the warrant. And make sure that we've encumbered everything within the warrant that we needed to.
Works for me.
Okay, is eight o'clock, Andrew, it worked for you as well? We figured earlier, quicker, just, just be done. It should, it should only be, it'll be the only thing. On the um, agenda.
Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, eight AM?
Yes.
Let me think about that. Um. Can we do eight-thirty?
Um, Ms. Malinowski? I know you.
Sorry, it has to do with the school, um, you know, bus times here. Um, but I guess Chelsea's in the.
I have live three drop-offs on Tuesday, starting at eight-thirty.
Well. I'll, uh.
So can, I could do seven-thirty. Is that better?
That's fine.
You know what, I can. Okay.
Who's got the quieter car?
Definitely not me.
So now, does the seven-thirty, and again, Andrew, it's the only thing and it's just gonna be to take a vote to close the warrant. That's, that's, that's basically.
Okay, does Ma- does Marty know what we just signed him up for?
Is Marty available?
I'll let him know. I'm sure he'll be fine, but we'll follow up with him as well. So Tuesday is seven-thirty AM.
Are we, can we talk about? The articles, though, that um are in the draft?
Absolutely, so that, um, yes. I just updated. Did you get the updated?
Uh, you know what, he did, yeah, um. Sorry, I got a hold of.
Yep, nope. Ready to do it now, Chelsea, than to try to do it at seven-thirty? Five-minute meeting.
Um, on the Board of Health one, can we update it to be um? Board of Health salary slash benefits, salaries slash benefits?
Uh, yeah, that, it, like I said, it's, it's simply the placeholder, but that's, that's fine. And I, I did get a real late email from Mr. Ballantyne. Giving, and I haven't even looked at it yet, as a draft as to how that article would look. Because you would ask to have that for your meeting, so that's coming shortly.
Okay, thank you. And I just had a question on the downtown article, um. I know, as Karina explained last night. You need to adopt a new map anyways.
Yes.
So my question is, regardless of which map is adopted. Would that be included as part of the downtown district article or is it a separate article depending on which map we do?
Sounds like a legal, sounds like a legal question.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, it's a good question, Chelsea, I just.
We're really doing two things. One, modifying the that current downtown district and second, creating a new.
Yes.
Downtown district, so maybe it's two issues there.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Is the order in which the articles are put in this draft, is that fixed or can they be uh moved?
They can be, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would just say, my suggestion would be, anything above eleven can potentially be moved around, but if you put the downtown district at the front. Everybody's gonna leave after that and none of these other articles, you may lose quorum. So.
Okay.
That was the reasoning for having it last.
Okay, that, that was my question was. And then on Article Two. Um. I don't like select board as one word. Can we at least have it to select two separate words, select board?
Yeah, so I, I did have a conversation with, with Jay Talman about this. And my concern was that when you establish the town administrator bylaw, you did a couple of special acts. Um, one of them was to give me signing authority um for warrants and for um, and for payroll. And um, but the other one was to create a five-member board of selectmen. And so you've got a special act that talks about Board of Selectmen. You've got the town code, which talks about Board of Selectmen. How do you do both? And the easy answer, I guess, is that you need to, um, you need to petition the legislature to change a special act. And you need to do something with the code. Um, but if you're looking to do this, and the legislature isn't gonna have an issue making this change for you. Because they're doing it, you know, all over the place for other communities that are, that have charters. But um, um, uh, Mr. Talman's advice was. You can easily probably do the bylaw change now if you wanted to and you can do. You can do the special act change um at, at your, at your leisure. If you wanted to wait for the spring, you could do something like that, too, so. That's something, something to consider, so I asked him for some options as to how that would be handled. But I am gonna ask now, before we go down this road, this is something that the board still wants to pursue, correct?
Well, yeah, I proposed it a while ago. I'm delighted to see it come back here, so I'm fully supportive of it.
I had, I think I had brought it up in this round, so I would be supportive of it.
Okay.
And.
I don't, I don't know that Marty was on board when we discussed it last time, so maybe we will talk about it on. On Tuesday.
Sure. And and Mark, I actually asked Jay about it at his office hours recently here, and he said that we actually have the. Flexibility informally, we can go ahead and change the name internally in terms of our discussions and so forth. Uh, whenever we want to here, but we do need to catch up on the official paperwork.
Yeah, so you can, I mean, the board, the board can make a policy, you know, Mr. Stivers is correct, uh, you know, board can make a policy decision. You know, and that moving forward, you will be referred to as a select board, not Board of Selectmen. Um, but the question is, okay, so what do we want to do now? You know, I, I don't want to go through a lot of, a lot of effort to, you know, put together, because this article may turn into two articles. One to petition the legislature to make the change to the existing special act, and then one that's gonna address simply the town code. Um, I don't know if the board is interested in, in trying to do everything at once. Or you'd like to, you know, um, you know, maybe make the policy decision and take care of the code now. And then do the special act at, at another time.
I don't see why we don't do both. Keep moving. I'm in favor of it.
I will just say, I'm on the fence on the cervical, so I'm not gonna say anything. I haven't made up my mind yet, so. Nope, that's fine.
Maybe the swing vote here.
I, I just want to make sure we're not gonna do an awful lot of work and the board's gonna say, eh, you know what, I don't think we want to put it on.
I mean, I, I, okay, so we wanted to keep the discussion to. One item, potentially, one vote for Tuesday. But I think, Andrew, where, where are you? Have you made up your mind on this?
Yeah, so I actually do have strong feelings against having it be one word. If it's gonna be a change, it should be select. One word, board.
I'm fine with it, too.
Okay.
But you're supportive of the change.
I think I am, um, you know. It's one I've struggled with, but you know, the way I think about it is there's, the number of towns that have now adopted this has gotten to the point where. Um. You know, I don't like changing language and, but why, is there some policy reason why we would resist this? Um, I don't really think that it kind of signal does it send if we consciously decide. Not to do it. Um. So again, not really, um, I, I think, I think I would support it, um.
So that makes the discussion going in on. Tuesday much easier.
And two half votes, so it's done.
So, you know, I mean, irregardless, I think, again, what, whether. We're Marty or I may follow, it doesn't matter, so there's a majority of the board to move forward.
But is it, um. Same, you agree would be two words, Chelsea, do you?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, because I have seen some towns do this, it's one word.
Mm-hmm, so I also agree if I support it, how's that?
Okay, thank you.
I just want to think about it a little bit more. I don't know.
Hey, hey, Lisa? Can we back up one second on the um, uh, downtown uh bylaw map thing?
Yes.
It's not clear to me. I think it would be a useful question for Jay on this one. To figure out how we do the map. Do we need two separate articles? One for the bylaw district and another then to revise the zoning map separately.
Yeah.
To create the new, smaller downtown business village district, which would remain in place here, so technically, there's a question in my.
Downtown district.
Well, the new one is downtown, the old one is downtown village business.
Correct.
And that would remain as a wedge, basically.
Right, you'd have to, that would have to remain, uh, as you're changing the maps, you'd have to approve both maps.
Okay, it would still be just called a business village district.
District.
And, yeah. It would, yeah, it would be actually, uh, it would be Business Village District, which would be combined with the uh, Fayetteville and Southville. And there's a, so the new, it would be a new set of, of properties for the Business Village District.
Yeah, so, Sam, I, I agree and and Mark's gonna forward um anyway, now that we move forward, we can forward it to council and get his opinion on the best language. And how we would go about doing this, because you're right, I think we have to fix the one, change the one, add the new, so.
That'd be two articles. Technically, let's get it right.
Yep, so, Mark, you got that?
Yep, all set.
Awesome, okay. So any other questions? I mean, Northborough Road, I think. Um, we're waiting on additional information on that, Mark, as well?
Yeah, I think, and the issue is, you know, I talked to Karen Galligan today. Even if we got the funding, you know, for town meeting, um, and, and even if the funding were to materialize. Tomorrow, um, getting this bid, getting the design, getting the materials and everything and getting it all done. And the road open by the time snow flies is probably going to be difficult to achieve. So even doing, so getting this, you know, getting, getting this to, to um, to change the status of the road between now. And winter, it, it's probably not gonna happen. This is gonna end up being a project for the spring.
So does it make sense to put that, take this off and put it on in the spring? I'm just thinking, if, if we're looking at potentially maybe in the spring, bringing Chestnut Hill to town meeting, does it make sense to?
Here's, yeah, but here's the issue, if you bring it, if you do it in the spring, your votes in the spring are usually um based on July one.
Okay.
So.
Good, now, yeah.
If you do it now, you'll have everything ready, can have everything designed, can have everything bid. And as soon as the weather allows in the spring, it could happen. Yeah, maybe, you know, maybe we have, you know, maybe something works out for us and we don't really have, you know, a cold snap or something and we're able to go a little bit longer. You know, um, you know, this, this season, so.
No, that makes sense, just, just, I was trying to weigh the options here. So does anyone else have anything further on the articles at this point? So we will get from um, town council, the answer on the maps. Um, so when we close the warrant, hopefully we'll have all that information on there. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so moving on from that. Office hours for town council. So um Mr. Stivers had reached out to me about opening up. Um, because initially we had discussions on opening the office hours to boards and committees as well as department heads and staff and whatnot. And um. We both have a different recollection, which is fine. So, um. We'll talk about it tonight and we'll decide really what the what with the intent of of what the board is. Um, so I will just say that. Part of my, I'm not against opening it up to boards and committees, but I worry about we have a two hour window once a month. And there's other business that has to get done, and we have a process of filling out a form. So I don't want to circumvent the process that's in that's in place already. And, um. I just worry about having such a small window. Um, and if if town council doesn't necessarily. Have enough time to address all these things. Um, Sam, that that's my concern. And again, I I think there's ways around it. I think potentially if we we follow the process and people fill out a form. And, you know, if if um Mark has an idea of of what's going on, and if it's something simple. Then, you know, it probably fits in. But my my concern is is just opening the door. Is somebody gets in before planning board and planning board's got a question that they really need an answer to today, they're a permitting board. So I guess I would just ask to do some level of priority, but still keep the same structure with um. Having some control of the legal requests that come in. So I'll let you go.
Good, good points, Lisa. And again, I, where I was coming from is in actually in the meeting, in the minutes we approved tonight for July twenty second. Mr. Healy made the observation that included boards and committees.
I saw that.
This access. And I would actually tighten it up some. It seems to me the right model is to have the chairs. Of boards and committees have access to this, because I I agree with you. You don't want forty seven different committee members coming in and. Doing it on an informal basis. So if, and I'm I'm also fine with the, for example, department heads seem to me ought to have a. A fairly clear shot at it. And board and committee chairs, I would think, uh, would be well served by filling out a form and saying, here's what I want to talk with town council about. And at least letting Mark know. And if Mark, you know, gets forty seven requests there, they can. Do some filtering and say, hey, you only got a limited amount of time here, so you know, maybe maybe next month or whatever. And particularly also um to have Jay um do an update for Mark particularly. And maybe us on sort of what happens at those sessions to get, keep an eye on what's going on there, I think would be useful feedback to. Hear what's happening there in terms of who's coming in. Uh, I've actually attended all three of them, and there was plenty of of uh dead airtime. In turn, and beyond what I was talking to Jay about. But again, I think we got plenty of capacity now, but it may well be as people learn more about this, that it becomes, uh, you know, more popular and. Becomes a capacity issue. And at that point, uh, I think we could to figure out, you know, what do you do next? Is that we meter it out to work more actively than? So I just think it's it's be interesting to see how people respond to it. And if it's useful, great. If it's overloaded, then we'll we'll cut back some.
Okay, Mr. Purple?
Yeah, so I I don't. I don't disagree that we should at least have an understanding of of what kind of time this is gonna take. I think it's more important to put a policy restricting selectmen's time with council during these office hours. Yeah. I had to drag drag Mr. Stivers away so some of the department heads could get in there, but. Um, but no, it, you know, in all seriousness, I think that, you know, now that we're on a stipend. You know, people are like, okay, so it's 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 not a money issue, so we, you know, we should come in and be able to do these things. Um, uh, you know, we have not scheduled people, because I think it's been alluded to by Mr. Healy earlier. You know, um, um, Jay is running through some of these issues. He can meet with a board, he can meet with a department head. And take care of their issue in five minutes and they can walk away knowing what they need to do. Um, so scheduling fifteen or twenty minutes for an issue may not be the best way to do this. I I think when it comes to. Um, the boards and committees, you know, if we want to limit it to the chairs, I think that's fine. But what I would still like to see to have at least some type of, um. You know, some some type of, I I don't want to call that a restriction, but just some type of 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 handle on the process. Is that the board and committees, you know, or the chairs and that still need to fill out the legal request form. And then, you know, and then Jake and, you know, Jake Jake can say. Yeah, this is gonna be, you know, I I can take care of this in five or ten minutes. This isn't gonna be, or he can look at it and say, you know. This is probably gonna be bigger than simply just coming in and seeing me on a Wednesday. Um, you know, uh, we could have a conversation, you can give me any other materials, but it's gonna be a takeaway. That that we're gonna have to do at another time.
Yeah.
Just so that everybody kind of gets, you know, gets there, gets a shot, or, you know, um, Karina or. Karen or somebody is coming in with an issue, uh, Dr. Alker wants to come in with an issue. Um, make sure that they've got time to get their issues addressed, you know, as well.
Yep, I agree. And I, again, my model is try it and see, and if it doesn't work, you fix it.
Yeah, just as, as long as, like I said, there's some guardrails up in place. I mean, uh, I, if if we prioritize in any way, I I would. Imagine.
Department heads.
Department heads first, then permitting boards. I I would always want permitting boards to have the opportunity if they have something they need. And then, right, Sam, from there, then you you could open it up to, um. You know, boys and committee chairs.
I would do chairs, though.
Yeah, I would, I agree.
Only to, it's see how it works. If that's a problem, then we'll assess it. And that that means selectmen last lowest priority.
Yeah, you're allowed to speak to counsel and help him carry his things back to his car.
I got a lot of experience.
You know, you get on the conversation on the way back to the parking lot, that's.
Experience being the bag man, so.
Yeah, so Sam, I, sorry, go ahead, Chelsea.
I just have a question. Um, Mark, when a border committee fills out a form now. How does um Jay respond back to that?
I think it depends. Um, again, the first, the last thought is a formal written opinion. So um sometimes a a lot of it is back and forth through email. Sometimes it's a phone call. Um, I think it varies. There is, there is no set, there is no set response.
I just don't want to, I just don't want to lose um a way to track. How boards and committees have gotten feedback, opinion, answers to their questions by. You know, not having that email chain. So I think that's what I'm concerned about. You know, even though they fill out the form still, we know what question was asked, but, you know. How it was responded to, you know, if if the board. Or committee chair is asking the question and then bringing it back to their committee. Then I think we're subject to interpretation. Um, and so I actually. Am not in favor of um opening it up like that unless we have a way to. Not lose that.
Well, that, you know, that, and 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 that is my one concern is that it's kind of like that game of telephone you played as a kid, you know, the.
Yeah.
The further it went out, the the things changed just a little bit, and if someone's gonna come in and have a verbal conversation and get council's opinion. And then try to remember, write it down and and then carry it back to the board and committee as council's opinion. Here's what council said we need to do, and we don't get it quite right. Um, you you know.
Yeah.
And I'm trying not.
A log, yeah.
Well, and I'm trying not to, you know, and I'm trying not to add additional administrative items to Jay. You know, as well, you know.
I think, I think if we could um have the form and then have a checkbox and say, I would like to. Do it, do this live and and have you monitor those mo- like, have, just if. I don't know how, what the volume's gonna be, right? Like, I don't know if if chairs are. You know, available on a Wednesday morning to go talk about an issue. I mean, for me, if I were a chair. Um, I would probably just send, do the form and get an email, right? Like, I just think that's more convenient. I think it's nice for the department heads who are in the building or, you know. Can, you know, bounce over there from, you know, senior center to ask those questions. I guess, what are we gaining by opening it up? Like, we have a process for chairs to ask questions. I guess I'm I'm not, I'm not understanding what we're gaining from taking away the visibility of it.
I think we're gaining flexibility in terms of the conversation versus the written approach. Uh, because it's always hard, I think, or often hard for people to sort of get the entire question in. In written form to say, I want to talk about X, Y, Z. And when you start talking with town council, other issues come up. So I think you're more likely to get a more complete answer in person. For at least fairly straightforward things versus the ones that Jay has to go back and research and and create a written opinion on.
I, Chelsea, I I I think it, I agree, it's an issue. There's no trail to what town council said or may not have said. Um, Andrew, you, you're sitting there with a smile. So let's get your thoughts on this as well.
Um, you know, I'm just coming back to what is the, the question here is whether to continue town council office hours or to not do so or.
No, it's it's to offer the office hours to boards and committee chairs. Which currently have to fill out a form, um, and then council responds. So it's giving them the opportunity to come in and sit with council to potentially get their question answered in person.
Yeah.
So I I guess one question I would, I would, I would ask is, oh, you know, and I'm not seeing it and I'm not hearing it from council. That, you know, there are issues with border committee, you know, border committees getting their answers. I think a lot of people really appreciate the fact that, you know, that that this council likes to use email. Um, is is very willing to use that as the medium um to contact and and things happen very quickly. And that takes care of the trail issue that Ms. Malanowski is talking about that I think is important for us to understand. You know, again, if councils, if councils answering questions in person to boards and committees. And, you know, um, the tree falls in the woods, you know, you don't hear, did it actually fall? If we're not sure of some of these things that are going on, but Jay's got to now provide another, another layer for us, another report. You know, is that valuable or is it better to have everything happen through the email and then we inherently have that trail?
Yep, and again, I think we can get the trail if Jay keeps a log, but I would point out that, you know, I I much prefer to talk to my attorneys. Directly versus doing it via email, because always things come up during the process that you didn't think about when you sent the email or whatever. And I think we've got some of the similar problem with department heads and that uh Jay tells the department had something. And we don't know what they're doing as a result of that necessarily until a problem erupts maybe. So there's still that track, that audit trail, if you will, in terms of what's going on out there. No perfect solution, I guess.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Um, no, my inclination is to, um, you know, we could try an arrangement like this for a couple. Months and and see how it works out. And, um. So, um, Mark, when you're talking about, so where, let's say a a board or a committee chair asks, sends an email to. Jay asking them a question, can they do that without your permit? Okay.
No. So they, so boarding committee members, yeah, so boarding committee has to fill out the legal request form. Um, I then, you know, um, you know, approve it, send it to Jay. And Jay then, you know, takes it from there, whether it's by directly handling that or reassigns it to someone in his office. And um they'll reach out either through email or by phone to the person, you know, if there's some clarification or something they need. Um, and and, uh, you know, to, to provide the opinion.
Okay.
So I'm happy to try it for a couple of sessions and then I can report back and, you know, let you know how this is working. Um. Uh, it's, I'll I'll take whatever direction the board wants to give.
I mean, practically, do a lot, do do actually people show up to these office hours and just. Or, um.
There there are, yeah, I I I would think, um, I want to say you've got usual suspects. Uh, I think the town planner takes great advantage of having council there and being able to ask things.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Karen, Karen Gallagher, you know, does, you know, for PPW, um, you know, there, there's gonna be the off conversations, I think, with. Police chief. Um, I know that um, uh, Ms. Hale, um, you know, has has, um, you know, her questions. Um, and I do as well, so, but I usually try to come up at the end. Um, you know, so, yeah, I I think you've got your usual suspects and then fitting in boarding committees and how that's gonna work. It, the the only issue is, you know, they allocate within the fee roughly two hours. Jay's not sitting there with a stopwatch. You know, it's like, okay, come in at ten, you know, twelve, twelve thirty, we leave. But if it starts become coming in at ten and leaving at one thirty, quarter or two, and this is happening, it may be that we need to redo, we need to talk about the fee.
Sure.
Again.
Absolutely, yeah. So, Andrew, the committee uh chairs don't actually know much about it at this point, so it's, they, we really don't have a good feel for how much they might use it or not. So, but I think watching it and then adjusting is is the right pedal.
Yeah, I can see practically why department heads would be more. Uh, inclined, because they're actually working during normal business hours around the townhouse. And there's also the benefit of Jay actually meeting some of the other department heads. And once you start to, you know, establish a relationship with a lawyer, then, uh, you know, it's. A lo- a lot of the people that might be asking for his advice have some basic questions that. Having a basic conversation early on will mean they won't have to come back um with similar questions later. And that they also, now that they can put a name to a face, can email him uh with your, you know, you would be then. You would be in the loop on that. So, I mean, that's kind of vague, but that's my suggestion now to proceed is to. Keep the, you know, they have the, the office hours open for a couple of months and then see how it it works out.
So is a guard rail, because again, I I think Chelsea made a good point on and the interpretation piece. Um, as much as I don't, I'm not in favor of of adding anything to councils. Um, you know, administrative duties, but I I I'll tell you, Mark, I I would have some level of confidence. And if it's something simple they're coming to him for, it takes two seconds to jot down on the same form what he's told them. And, um, you know, then we have some idea instead of waiting and having something come up at a meeting. And somebody say, well, I was told by council this, and we're going, what? I, he couldn't have said that, you know.
So I don't, so i- i- and I, and I don't disagree, so, um. Why don't we do, so the board and committee chairs are gonna have to fill out the legal request form. You know, for them to come in to be able to do this. And then, you know, I'll give Jay the option is that if. Uh, you know, I don't know, pick, pick a committee chair, comes in, meets with, meets with with Jay about something, has a conver- you know, uh. His, his or her issue, has a conversation, gets the answer they need. Jay has two choices. You either can follow up with an email, just confirming, okay, so we talked about this today. And this is, and this is what we agreed, you know, that you should do moving forward. Um, or he can, as Mr. Stivers suggested, maintain a log, you know, as to, um. Well, you know. I'm not sure, log is the right way to put it, because we already know what they're in there for. We just don't know what the advice given was.
And and I would imagine too, I mean, he's here for two hours. So if it's something that's gonna take an extensive conversation, then it's not gonna happen during office hours.
Well, yeah, a- and that's, that's gonna be the determination, you know, he's gonna have to determine, is it something we can handle during office hours or something that? That we can't.
Right, right.
So I I imagine the the answer to either jot something down would be relatively simple, and Jay's pretty good about doing that. And, you know, not requiring, getting to the point, I guess, is is more what I'm trying to say. He's very good at getting to the point, so. Um, and again, if we're not anticipating a ton of boards and committees, then I don't think it's that big of a deal. I just like to write, don't they, Andrew?
Yes.
Okay, so Chelsea, are you? Okay.
I mean. I usually am good with trying something. I'm not thrilled about this, but I'll try it.
Okay. So I think we've set some, a few.
Yeah, I will put, I will put the guardrails up um on this. And 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 so that we can really have a way to evaluate whether it's valuable or not.
Yeah, okay.
There's electrified guardrails.
Yeah, six foot.
Okay, so uh, next up is the remote working policy. So Vanessa had got some edits. From department heads that are incorporated. from department heads that are incorporated. Sam, I don't think you sent, Vanessa, you had mentioned you had four, I believe it was, edits, changes that you were looking to do.
I did send my red line and I was disappointed that it didn't make it in there much, so.
Vanessa's got that look on her face, I'm gonna let.
I I didn't receive any emails from Mr. Stivers, were they sent directly to me?
Um, I thought I did, I'll go back and look, maybe it didn't make it.
Okay. Thank you.
But again, nothing fatal there, just sort of style stuff, but, uh, but I'm I'm okay with it as presented here, basically.
Okay, okay, so, um, and and Sam, we can always make little tweaks after the fact.
Not a, not a huge deal.
Okay, that's fine. So I I was fine with what was presented here as well. Chelsea, did you have any comments or thoughts?
Um, no, just curious if, um, there was any staff, department head feedback on doing something like this.
In in general, the the very, I had a few offhanded, you know, oral comments, um, that people were very pleased that the board is select when we're talking about this and very thing.
Okay, okay, I'm good with it, Lisa, thank you. Okay, Andrew?
I was also good with it and that, you know, um, Sarah's, uh, um, departure clearly illustrates why this is something, why, that's a neat perfect example of why we should have a policy like this in place, to try and retain people like her.
Yep, I agree. All right, so that being said, it seems like we are all in agreement. Do we have a motion? Oops, sorry, go ahead, Vanessa. Was it somebody?
I don't think she's going to get in the way of you.
Nope, um, I'm also in support of it as written, so do we have a motion to approve the remote work policy as presented and edited?
So move.
Second.
Uh, Ms. Malinowski.
Hi.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Mr. Dennyton.
Aye.
It's brachio, aye, and again, Vanessa, thank you very much for, um, spearheading this and and getting it the way that we were looking to give a little bit of flexibility to the department heads as well, so, thank you very much.
Vanessa, I just looked, I actually don't see an email I sent to you, so maybe I didn't send it, because I I know I did.
Okay.
My apology is not a big deal.
Okay, thank you to all of you for your support in this venture.
Okay, next up, public comment. We have three wonderful people that have hung around all this time. Um, if you would like to comment, please raise your hand. Going once, going twice, all right. That being said.
You got one.
Oh, we did, oh, not quick enough. All right, Tim, come on over. Good evening.
Evening.
State your name and address for the record, please, I should have done that with Mr. Miller, too.
Sure, Tim, Flynn, eighteen Main Street.
All right, welcome.
I'm not, thanks, I'm not sure if you guys specifically said this or not, um, I might have missed it earlier, so if you did, I apologize, but um, I know that the high, the heavy vehicle, um, request, I again, I'm just like to encourage the board to look into, um, the current funds and see if it's available from current funds and not need to go back to town meeting, and maybe the DPW could use their road management fund to possibly pay for that. And also expedite, um, getting that survey started.
All right, thank you, we will get an answer to that question. I thought we did, but maybe we didn't. So we'll we'll get an answer to that for you, Tim, thank you. All right, anyone else going once, going twice? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Is there a second? All right, Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Mr. Dennyton.